Yes, sir. You could have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Gary, do we have any questions here coming in from the public? Or...
No, we have no public comment.
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, we don't have any, we've not received any public...
Okay, well, I'll skip reading this paragraph then, and we can run right into the articles. Article one to consider, the board meeting minutes of February three, nine, and eighteen. If I could have a motion?
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Any discussion? There was one issue here. What? Is that the win?
The win. The board here, Ruth.
Yeah.
Any questions concerning the minutes of our meetings, February three, nine, and eighteen? If not, all in favor, opposed? To consider the treasurer's warrants? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Make it a motion. Okay. Any questions here? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Other business? Article three.
I've added the, you can see it on the screen here, but you also have another package for other business.
Yep.
And what that is, is the bids for the police cruiser. And the GSA has, they're getting ready to close on the Vital App property, the town owns the tax-acquired one. So they're looking for the release, quick claim deed on that one, and also the sewer easement release deed that accompanies that property. And then also a demonstration by Newtown App by Simple Computers 101.
Okay. You want me to open these bids now, Gary?
Up to you.
Yeah, we might as well do that first.
How many, how many bids have we received?
You know, it looks like there's two letters here, or two quotes from Percy's, Griffith, and, and, and I don't know where this one's from.
I think it's Pelletiers, also.
At least three, Gary.
Okay.
So, yeah, Pelletiers is the first one that I opened. It looks like it's a Durango, and it's priced at forty thousand, six oh five. They have a second page here. They have a second page, and it itemizes the color, it's a two thousand, twenty-one, but it prices this one at thirty, thirty-two, thirty-two thousand, one twenty-four. I'd have to go back and look these over, I don't see the difference here, but anyway.
They might have sent one for Charger and one for Durango.
Well, it labels this one also as the, as a Durango.
Maybe have Ross take a look at it. Ross can probably be more, more aware of the package.
These are Durangos, two, twenty-twenty-one Durango pursuit vehicle, and the other one, it doesn't, it just says Dodge Durango, so you want, if you want to take a look at them, see if you see anything, is there a big difference in price here? These are the, these are the two prices that they're showing us. This one is from Percy's, twenty-twenty-one Dodge Charger, all-wheel drive. The bid is thirty thousand, one ninety. I'm just opening these now, so I haven't really had a chance to look at these. This one is a twenty-twenty-one Dodge Durango pursuit vehicle, all-wheel drive, and it's priced at thirty-two, five ninety.
That's from Percy's, Doug?
Yep, it is.
How much is that one now?
Thirty-two thousand, five ninety. This one is from Griffith. This vehicle is a Ford Police Interceptor. There's a lot of information here that, that should be considered, but anyway, this one is priced at thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents.
Maybe Ross could, Ross is the one that provided the specs to the dealer, so maybe he could elaborate on those bids, and make a recommendation to you.
So, we asked for bids for a SUV and also a sedan. So Dodge, right now, is the only one that has a sedan, it's the Charger, and the Durango, both Griffith and Percy's have that. And then the other one was the Ford SUV.
Yep, but they're also offering eight-year, hundred-thousand-mile hybrid unique component warranty, five-year, hundred-thousand-mile powertrain care extended service plan also included.
Okay, so, in the reserved police car account, we have forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. The estimates to upfit the three vehicles, the three different vehicles are all the same, about seven thousand dollars. So, so some of them are definitely, you know, out of the question because of the price that puts us over what's left in that account. So, in speaking with the officers, they mentioned, again, like Saturday night, with the snow, they were using the Charger, and the Charger doesn't have enough clearance from the ground, so they're having trouble with driving it. So they asked to replace the old SUV with another SUV, and I think the Durango would be the better option.
And the Durango was priced, which one now? The Durango...
Well, I don't know if this was a mistake from Pelletier Ford, because there's two there.
While you're looking at them, I know we're not in discussion yet, but since you're looking, are, are these, is there a date? Like, are these only good this week?
No, I...
Am I, because if I'm not out of line, I'm going to be asking to table this, because there's no way that I'm not going to...
That we're gonna...
I mean, I, I don't, so I want to know, is there dates on there while you're looking?
Well, I mean...
No, they'll honor these.
There's no date of purchase, but there's a date that they were, they were executing.
No, but I mean, is there a date that we're going to honor this until, for this week only? I mean, it...
Nothing, nothing, I don't see anything that says that, in any of them. In any of them, so, yep, so, if you want to do that, then we'll do that, so we can consider these.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to table this article, so that we can all have copies of those, and...
I'll second that. Okay. Are we all in favor?
I gotta wait discussion real quick.
Yep, yep, sorry.
Can we, can we have Ross review those, and maybe come up with a little feedback to us?
Scenario?
I can go make photocopies right now of everything.
Yeah, you don't need to do that now.
No, 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 I'm saying, when, after this meeting, we can give them to you, and we can take some notes down, give us an explanation of what you feel is best, so that, that'll aid us in our decision when we look at all of them.
Very good.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Okay, to consider a quick claim release deed to the General Service Administration for the ninety-one Vitell Drive, map five, lot one sixty-three, tax-acquired property.
So, this is just the execution of the quick claim deed to release that property to the town, to the GSA? You remember a while back, we've already acted on this, the head meet is an offer, we had accepted it, they, they have, the heirs have some title to that, the heirs of the previous owner who's now deceased have some, some rights to the property, and GSA's working with them as well, but you can see right here, the quick claim deed, this is going to be going to the General Service Administration for the new property, with the new, what, port of entry is going to be built, it's the last house on Vital Drive. I would recommend that we approve this.
I make a motion to accept the call come deed as written.
I'll second.
Any other issues or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Yep, sorry, I didn't see you.
Now, have you, have you gone by Article three, other business?
That's what we're in.
That's what we're dealing with.
Okay, all right, because I have a few issues when the time comes.
So, the other item that we had here that was listed on Article three, to consider a sewer easement release deed to the General Service Administration for ninety-one Vitell Drive, map five, lot one sixty-three, tax-acquired property.
And that's what this is, there is a sewer easement there in place. We get to that home, which, by the way, was, was evaded, and that sewer line was painted when, in two thousand and fourteen, I believe, in the last construction, Roger, there was no, nobody living down, that that end of the street, and so the sewer line was evaded, but the easement still exists, and that needs to be released, and that's what this would be, is written here. I would recommend a motion to approve.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the sewer easement release deed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? unanimous? Last item there on Article three, demonstration of the Newtown App by Simple Computers 101.
I'm not sure when you want to do that, Doug? Do you want to take care of that now, or do you want to do that later on?
Is this something that you want to have a considerable amount of time to do?
No, I think about twenty minutes, half hours is most, is what it takes.
Twenty minutes to a half hour.
I think we can get through quite a bit of business here before my thoughts.
Say again?
I, I, excuse me, I think we can breeze through quite a bit of the agenda, get quite a bit of stuff out of the way first, and then we can, my thoughts, and we can deal this, take this one on towards the tail of the agenda.
Okay. Okay. I don't have anything else here on Article three that was given to me.
Nope, that's all I, that's all I have online.
So, are we all done with Article three?
Well, seeing that you skipped public participation.
Well, what do you mean? I mean, we're talking, we're talking Article three now. I don't have anything here that, that was given to me that we need to discuss, other than what we just did.
Well, I have four quick little issues that I'd like to bring before the board, do you want to bring it up, other, under other business?
Well, normally, public participation is just that.
Okay.
You know, so you, as far as the board is concerned, other business, that's where normally the board discusses whatever else we now, we might have, and that's what I'm saying, I don't have anything else here.
Well, no, well, seeing that we've skipped public participation, would that have been, that would be the...
Are you saying that you're speaking on behalf of, of, of somebody in the public? Or you're speaking on behalf of yourself?
Well, as a selectman, I have four topics I'd like to bring up.
Well, see, that would be under Article three, and I don't have anything. You have not given me anything, I don't think you've given Gary anything. Normally, you would present that to us before the meeting.
Well, up until now, it has been an allowed, has it not?
At this point, I mean, it, it's normal.
Well, if, if, I mean, and that was... If you don't want to hear it, no problem.
Is it something that you can discuss with me in private, and we can bring it up in the next meeting, or...
From what I gather, you're not interested, so let's move on.
Well, no, it's just, just to follow the norm, and we, you know, it's good for us to, the norm... Well, we've always, we've always been, been, been making people aware, I mean, I've allowed things to go on, but I'm just saying, at this point, it's, it's best if we try to keep things in a normal manner, and in a decent decorum, and normally, these issues are brought up to us, at least by midday today. That's been discussed before, it's not new.
Very well, Mr. Chairman, I'll bring it to you in writing. This is something that would have taken two minutes, but apparently, the input is not welcome, so let's move on.
All right, let's move on. Article four, consider a letter of resignation by the code enforcement officer.
So you have in front of you, sadly, a letter of resignation from Dave Duret, our code enforcement officer, who's accepted employment at another employer, not a municipal side. So, sad to see him go, he was, he was good, he learned well in a short period of time. So, I'd like for you guys to go ahead and accept that, that letter of resignation, if you would, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation. I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I will add, I will add that Dave has agreed to, I asked him to stay on an extra week, he had given, excuse me, he had given us two weeks' notice, and I asked, because I was out absent from work for a couple of weeks, I asked if he had the opportunity to maybe stay an extra week for us, and he agreed to. So thanks to Dave for doing that, it's a big help for us, for sure. Just to give you a little bit of an update, that we are advertising for the position, it's going to be in this week's same job at the Times, we also advertised, as of last week, it was on the opportunities list of website, as well as the main job link, formerly known as the Main Job Bank. So, we are actively looking for, for the position.
I think we were at the point of voting, right? That we're accepting this? Did we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, I might have cut you off there.
So we do, we do have a motion, right? And a second?
I'm not, I'm not.
So we all in favor of accepting a resignation? Unfortunately. Okay, Article five, to consider a letter from the Town of Van Buren EMS concerning call coverage.
Yeah, so, I gave you a copy of the letter that we received from the town manager on behalf of the board, selected in Van Buren, indicating that they want to start charging for calls that are covered. In Madawaska, sometimes we, we're not adequately staffed, or we have, you know, we have a little bit of a gap, because we're already out in the field, and we rely on, we have agreements with our endowment's department counterparts to provide coverage, and likewise, we do it the same way, it goes, it's, it's a two-way agreement, if you will. Van Buren Board decided that they want to start charging seven hundred fifty dollars for their calls that they do when you come to Madawaska, or certain communities that we provide service to. So, I, I felt compelled to, I think you'll see that in my email to her, I wanted to reach out to her and say, well, we want to maintain a good relationship with Van Buren, it's always been a good relationship with them, the endowment's departments. Grand Isle basically reached out to us, as they've done in the past, before I got to Madawaska, over appearance of time, Grand Isle has asked around for prices, they've reached out to Madawaska before, and they've done so last year. That, that request was put before you, the board, and we gave them a proposal that is exactly the same formula, utilizes the same exact formula for the communities, other communities that we serve, the Frenchville and Seana Gap. So, we, we didn't go after Grand Isle, or we didn't try to outbid them in any way, we had, we already had a system in place for providing services, and what those services would cost, and we asked for a proposal, and they, they accepted it. So, I, I just wanted them to understand, that was the nature of how we ended up being the provider of endowment services to Van Buren. And I indicated to her that, you know, this board will decide whether or not we want to in turn charge for services that we cover to, to, excuse me, to Van Buren. So, that'll be for you to decide, I think that, in the, normally, we don't count the calls that we cover for each other, it's sort of a wash, and there might be more in one community than the other community from one year to the next, but it's sort of like a mutual win kind of thing. This is a bit of a departure, it's still a, it's still an agreement, we're going to gain mutually, but they're going to charge us seven hundred fifty bucks for every call when they come to our community, or the communities that we serve. I think that this board should probably consider assessing the same thing to Van Buren for calls. It's likely that they're going to cover more calls for us than we will for them, because we're, we are a larger, we cover a larger area, we have more residents, more homes that we cover. So that would be my recommendation. Eric Sears here, he's our supervisor, as you know, and he is available to answer any of your questions, I think, regarding this. Eric, you, first of all, do you have anything to add? And Ward, I would encourage you to ask Eric any questions you have.
No, I really don't have anything to add, I'm just, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
No, I really don't have anything to add. I'm just, I'm open to any questions that one may have.
Yep, go ahead and...
So I'd like to make a motion so we can start a discussion on it. So I'd like to make a motion that we reciprocate and charge Van Buren seven hundred fifty dollars per call that we respond to for mutual aid for them.
Do you have a second? Further discussion? Yep.
So mutual aid goes a long ways and it's great when communities can help each other out and scratch each other's back without charging. You know, it's unfortunate that we have to start charging Van Buren. I'd hate to do that, but at the same time, we need to also protect ourselves and if we're going to be charged to go there, you know, if they're going, you know, if we're going to be charged for them to come here, we need to at least recoup some of that money by charging if we go there.
Eric, is this a, I mean, is this being brought up because it's really disproportionate calls from one town to the other? Is that why this is being brought up?
I'm not sure why Van Buren did this, if it's a retaliatory thing or a financial thing that, that they're doing. So that, that really, that's, I don't know why, because they hit us out of the blue with this, just like all of a sudden.
They what?
They hit us out of the blue with this. They just all of a sudden sent us a letter. Our relationship's always been good with them. We go there to help them. They come here to help us. You know, it happens. We have busy days and just, you know, calls come in, they don't come in two, three hours apart, unfortunately. I mean, just last week, we had five calls coming in two hours. You can't plan that, so, and we've all had a relationship with them as well, but now they're just out of the blue. They just decided they're going to start charging us a lot of the call.
You know, and it could be, you know, I want to, I want to put some emphasis here that, you know, proportionately, they are probably putting in more calls than we are to us than we are to them. And we all, these ambulance departments operate with the thinnest of margins and so, you know, if this is, if it's putting a strain on them financially, that's understandable. I'm not, listen, I'm not opposed to them charging us. We just have to be the same and, and, you know, we'll recoup. We're each going to recoup on each other our costs, if you will. So that would be my, my recommendations, that we go in and assess the fee for calls covered in Van Buren.
I just got a quick question for Eric. That seven hundred fifty dollars that Van Buren charges us.
Yep.
Does that person's insurance, if they have any, recover, recoup some of that cost to us or no, not at all?
They'll decide what they're going to make on the call. So they're going to charge a patient that they've transported their insurance. They're going to get that money, whatever is allowed in, and then they get the seven fifty for much as they want.
Okay, so we're stopped paying that seven fifty?
Yeah. We had checked into this in the past because A S I, Fort Kent does the same thing for us. We were concerned about double that, whether this was legal or not, and it is legal.
Okay, you have your own.
I just want to say, I just want to make the point that in, in my mind, you know, they have taxpayers to answer to, just like we do, and I would think that, you know, if, if we are going multiple times to Van Buren and putting those costs on the budget for our taxpayer that, you know, they're looking to recoup some. So I feel like it's fair and, you know, it's unfortunate that we are where we're at, but with costs nowadays for fuel and wages and insurances and I certainly can understand why they would do this.
So the motion on the floor is to consider Van Buren's flat fee of seven hundred fifty dollars per call and that we reciprocate that same amount for the calls that we provide Van Buren. No other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. That was Article Five. Article Six, to consider an application for abatement property taxes for property account number one thirty-four. One thirty-four, that's the blue sky.
So this is the next, these next abatements that we're working on are basically housekeeping, if you will. Heather and Carol have been working on, on some old accounts. This is an account, our property, that was merged with another and, and when that was done, it created a new account and it left, there was a one dollar and four cent balance left on that account and merged. So we want to, we want to abate that so we can close that account out.
Do I have a motion?
That would be my recommendation. That would improve this.
Do you have a second? Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Article Seven, to consider an application for abatement of property taxes for property accounts twelve sixty-seven and two ninety-eight, now town only property.
So the, this is the Blue Sky Hotel property that was purchased back in twenty nineteen. And the board had approved the purchase of the property for twelve thousand dollars plus the, what was the left of balances on taxes in sewer. And again, this is just a housekeeping action. Right now, we have to basically go in and pay that amount of money, which is three thousand two hundred twenty dollars and forty-three cents. Here, this was approved back in, although I don't think I included the board minutes on this. I did share them with Manon because she will be asking the question about that, sharing the minutes of that, of when that was approved. So my recommendation would be go ahead and approve this agreement. This is the town itself making an abatement request on property that it now owns.
Do I have a motion?
I will.
You have a second? Please. Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a vote to approve against all in favor. Article Eight, to consider proposal by Powers Roofing and Sheet Metal for the roof...
You forgot one.
You forgot one, you guys.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, maybe I had that one too somewhere. And it might be that one, Mano. Yep, okay. So this one is Article two ninety-eight.
Is, for account two ninety-eight?
Yep.
So the explanation on this, this is the property behind the police station on Fifth Avenue. It's ninety-two Fifth Avenue. That was a dilapidated home that was purchased for the sewer line relocation project there. And the issue with that, just to give you some history on that, this was a purchase that was approved and paid for by USD or World Development. The sewer, sewer project paid for the demolition and the abatement. And the reason why the town had to acquire that property is the sewer line goes down Fifth Avenue on the, if you're driving down, if you're driving north on Fifth Avenue, and it's on the right of the street. But before it intersects with Clavett Street, it veered off onto private property because there was too much ledge, hard ledge there back in the day when we loaded that sewer line that they opted to hit the, hang right in the perimeter of Eddie Parity's property, going to the back of this property and then across the mortal property, if you will, to the property that we had here and hook up to Clavett Street, further down on Clavett Street or further east, if you will. Now, what happens is back then, with, with the sewer project, historically in towns, if you're not aware, old, towns with old sewer lines oftentimes have, don't have the easements in place, the public easements or the sewer easements for the sewer line. They were put in under a handshake agreements or whatever. But when we took on this project, this sewer line project, as many different, we've done this in many different locations in the town with this sewer project, we had to acquire sewer easements from the property owners because the government wouldn't release money to us for to pay for the project if, if we didn't have vested interest in that property. So the issue with the sewer line where it was located was, is Mr. Eddie Parity's property where the sewer line was located on, and he was deceased. His property was in, in probate. And I believe the property was also in foreclosure from a bank out of state somewhere. So the attorneys had advised us that in no way we could ever get an easement in time to complete this project. So we started looking at options with the engineers about how to get this line replaced and rerouting it or, or going through hard ledge. We had the dilapidated property on that ninety-two Fifth Ave, which was a property that the town had been trying to get removed by the owner's expense many, now back in, back, I think in Christina's area, in this town area, and it was still there. So the town negotiated with the owners and the town basically paid for what was owed on the property for the mortgage at the bank. I believe it was roughly four thousand dollars, something like that, forty-five hundred bucks. So that's what the board, the World Development approved that purchase to make that happen. The board approved the purchase as well back in two thousand nineteen. But there is a balance on the, on the tax account, if you will, which is going to be deleted once we, once we abate the balance of taxes on you. It would be my recommendation that we go ahead and do that.
Do I have a motion? Yep, a second? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? This just looks like we're cleaning our books here, Gary.
It's just a little bit of housekeeping. All it is.
Article Eight, to consider proposal by Powers Roofing and Sheet Metal for the roof replacement on the safety complex building.
Is Gerald, is Gerald there with us tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, so at our last meeting, we talked about this, or maybe not the last meeting. We had to table that, see whether or not, we could get at the prices and then there's a question about bidding and whatnot. And so Gerald, I know that you and Jim Susi have kind of tag teamed on this to see if there's other companies that would be interested in bidding or giving us a proposal. Gerald, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Jim, Jim is here. I'll give the phone to Jim so that way he's, he's the one that contacted the other, the other companies.
Yeah, so Gerald had asked me to look up some companies for, you know, to come and work up here. I did. I called a couple. The first one was Bangor and the other one was Oakland, Maine. Bangor has never answered me back. I left him three voice messages. Oakland, I talked to the guy in Oakland and Oakland is by Waterville. And the other two places would also be in Waterville. And I talked with him and told him what we had. He Googled it. He looked at the, the area here to do this job. And he asked me, he said, you know, how much, about how much it would cost to go up there and something. I, I told him, well, it's, it'd be up to him to see how much, you know. I think what he was looking for is to see if we would pay him to come up here for, not to lose his time to come up here because he knows we already have Powers looking at this job. And always, he told me, he called me a couple of days ago and he said, you know, if I don't call you back, that means I'm not interested. So, and I can see that because Powers is local. And I know the last few boards that we've had, we've always gone through this about trying to get prices from other roofing companies. And these people ain't going to come up here for a little job like this. And plus, the price wise, they'll never meet what Powers does. One of the issues with that is you figure these people have to come up here with trucks. They have to board these peoples, keep them here overnight, while Powers, they can bring them right back at home at night. So I'm going to leave it up to the board. You want me to keep going with this, but I know Powers have been working with Gerald and Gerald's got a, these people have kept, they got material to do this stuff right now, Powers does. And they can, they can, they can give us a good price and stuff, but it's, if you still want consists of having a price from another company, I can, I can still try. Right now, I'll tell you right now, guys, these guys don't want to come up here just for this job. They don't work up here. They even said so. They said this, you know, this area here, they, they like to do their, their area of Bangor and south and stuff. That's where the money is. But to come away up here, I think we're wasting our time.
So they never, they never gave you any kind of a quote?
No, they never, they didn't even, they weren't even interested because they have to come up here, is what he had told me. He said, I'd have to come up here. Really, I, I could see that for him to come up here and waste the day. It'll cost money there for him to just, just to come up here.
If I could look at a motion here?
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal by Powers Roofing for the hundred three thousand four hundred fifty dollars.
Second?
I'll second.
Hold on just a second. So let me just have to look for a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of discussing? Yep, go ahead.
But the discussion is that Powers came back to me and he said, well, like I told him, we can't guarantee the whole job because this has to be a town meeting in June, or whenever it's going to be. To make sure we do everything. So he says, well, the material will be going up middle of March when we order. It'll grow by five to eight percent. So he says, if you want to, we can, with the money that you have, we can hold, we can buy the material and then to do the, to do the work. If you have the rest of the money this year coming up, we can do the work this summer or if it gets turned down, whatever it is, well, whenever we have a chance to, to do the work or the labor, we can do that. And in other words, you just buy the materials out before it goes up or increases. That's when we, you don't, and we have now the fifty thousand.
I don't know, I don't know if it's you or Kim in or I don't. The ninety-two hundred dollar credit for the trucks covering roofing, we did say that we could do that, right?
Yes.
What, somebody tell me tipping fees, how much money is that? Like, what is that?
That's the, how much the weight, how much weight that you will carry to the incinerator or the transfer station. That's all known when, when it's taken out. Doing that with our own trucks or this way, we can separate the gravel. There's gravel on the roof, so that way I can separate the gravel so you don't have to pay to, to despite that. Or you just phone and the pool that's on there, that pot around. I like it better that way. So this way, if the truck is half loaded, if there's a rain coming, something like that, you can put the truck inside so the water will not, or the rain will not absorb the, in the hole and then you're paying for water weight.
Do you foresee that in any way possibly, could that possibly go over the ninety-two hundred or is that a good buffer? Like, for me, like, I'm, I'm thinking Gerald, like, ahead because we want to put, we have to put fifty in your budget.
Right.
And I, I'm just wondering...
From what, from what happened at the town office and from what happened over the roof, over the fire station here, fire station here a few years ago, I, I, I made like fifteen hundred dollars. We saved, I'd say, not made, we saved fifteen hundred dollars from doing our own, our own material. At least.
Wait, you paid extra and you saved?
We saved.
You saved?
We saved, yes. We saved compared to paying ninety-two or I bet Tom, where I was paying.
Okay, so we had put fifty, if we put another fifty, as we had already discussed, that, that should cover it because, I mean, we need another thirty-four hundred dollars, but or, or do we have to go like fifty-two for the roof? Do we have to? I know this is in budget time, but I, before I go, I need to, I need to understand.
Once I talk to you back to say, well, given we'll buy the material, we'll buy the material, freeze the material when it sells and then we'll, we'll know how much it is for the labor after that.
Okay.
But if we say no, if you...
So if you were going to give her an idea of what the tipping, tipping cost would be?
Right.
You have a thought there of what that would be? The remaining cost of the materials is going to be in the future.
Right, if you will, be like now, ninety-two hundred. The keeping fee and then traveling. The trucks, he'll, he'll, he'll charge ninety-two hundred.
All right.
So we need to look for maybe like fifty-four thousand in his budget. That's all, that's what I was just trying to get at, get to. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So I, I mean, I think we definitely should jump on the fact of buying the materials early because, I mean, we've, we've already set aside enough money to cover them. Because, I mean, we've, we've already set aside enough money to cover the materials. And we know we have to do the roof, so whether we do it in sections, because we can't get all the money right away, or we do it in full. I mean, having material here and not having to pay that extra, what, eight percent, five to eight percent?
Five to eight percent, or just do the, do, just do half the roof that we have the money now and wait.
But at least.
If it is for the town, but if it is, then of course it's going to, it's going to be increased.
Right, but at least securing the materials ahead of time could be costly.
So, don't need to jump between here, but, so if the town, the townspeople don't approve this and we've already committed ourselves to, to, to pay or purchasing some of these materials.
Right, we've got the money for those materials, the roof has to be done, I mean, that's, whether, if they don't approve it, then we've got to do it in sections.
So we're going to have to do like half the roof?
Right. But in the long run, because you're, you know, you're going to save that eight percent from not buying the materials later on after the meeting, the town meeting.
I, I, I don't really think, I, I think, I think what the towns, townspeople will support this project. And I think that if we wait till town meeting, we totally know for sure, we have full commitment and fully complete the project. We're, we're not going to get going until this project is not going to be, you know, these contractors are going to be really busy all summer. And here we are, we're going to be in wait in May or June for every town meeting. So I, I don't want to hold them up, if it's our intent to let this work. I would just say that, like Jason said, we will have the funds to secure the materials. We'll still rely on the townspeople to provide the full funding. We'll, we'll address that, the amount we get, when we get it, after town meeting. Whether or not we can do, we can install the full product, the full roof this year, or will you have and need half the following year? We will have all the materials for that.
Okay, sorry.
I was just going to say, I, I agree with Gary, I don't, I don't foresee that this would not pass. I mean, the roof, it's a safety complex, the roof has to get done. I mean, we can't, it's going to cost more if we let it go much longer, so I'm not afraid to gamble that and say. I don't, I don't see people not approving it.
So Gerald, how would the process work, I mean, i- if, 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 if we move forward with this and you do decide to, to make that, that purchase before, before prices go up? Would you take delivery on the, on those materials now, or would they hold that for you, or how would that work?
They would hold it, but they, they have it on hand right now in their warehouse. They got the material to do the roof there, that's why, that's why they agreed to the same price as, as the price was proposed to be a year and a half ago. That, that was the first call I did, and you, and you gotta, you gotta stay the same price as, as the budget is now, it says, yes. If we do it, if we do the, the whole job, we got enough material in the warehouse here, because last year it was not much of an area.
We're, we're not going to commit any funds till, till the project is done anyway. They're only going to go this when the project is completed.
So you would get some kind of an invoice of what they've got put aside for you, is that how it would work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Plus, see, the, the more we know, because they've got DEP, DEP's got a little village up there, which, they got the, air, air quality control, whatever it is up there. And that, they, they would have to work with the contractor, and they told me that, that they would work with the contractor. So they got to get a crane and bring down their equipment from up there, so it can do the roof and then put it back. And they want a self, like a, like a platform, little platform, which is, there's already one there, but it's getting rotten up. And they would have to do, the roofing company, they will have to do another one, which will be at their expense, whether it is the crane, whatever has to be done with their machine will be at their expense, DEP's expense. And I want to make sure that the double, the roof is doubled wherever they're going to be. Not in five, six years, we got, we got a living situation, so I, I did talk to the roof and said, no, no, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that it's, 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 it's going to work out, you know. So DEP and with them, or whoever the contractor is going to be, they got to work together to synchronize. And at the time, if the roof is, if the whole roof is being done, if it's only partial, then we got to work somewhere else until, until we reach that part. But those, those two got to work together when it's done, but it's all their expense, DEP's expense, whatever is that involved.
Any other discussions? So the motion on the floor was to accept Powers' bid of, what is it?
Hundred and. Hundred and three four fifty.
So, hundred and three four fifty? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you. Thank you Gerald, Jim.
Article nine. Consider the terms of sale for restaurant equipment of the former Orchids Restaurant, assets held by the town by Wasco's UDAG program. We do have a list in front of us.
So I know you would typically use a motion here to open up discussion, but we, we don't really know what the terms are just yet. Think if you would entertain some, some discussion on that a little bit. Uh, to get a sense for what, how do you want to structure the terms of the sale before making that motion. Then I would kind of kick it off a little bit here, and then Jason Boucher could probably chime in, I would ask him to chime in as well. I want, I do want to give a shout out to Jason Boucher in the fire department, Public Works, in the rec department for mobilizing on short notice. And going up to the Orchids property to pick the equipment out of the former restaurant over there. They didn't hesitate and not wait a second, and they got it done in a quick amount, in less than a couple of days' work. So thankful to them for, for, for their efforts. And I know, you know, they really laid things out nicely up there, the rec department for interested buyers that will take a look at. With that, Jason, I want to thank Jason for really stepping up and working to do some research on, on values of the equipment, laying things out. Putting some thought process behind what a sale, how the sale of that equipment might look like. I, I will say that there are a few interested person, people that are businesses that are interested in some equipment, they've reached out to us. And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to Jason, and Jason can kind of give you his, his thought.
Before we do that, can I have a motion for a discussion on this article? Do you have a second? Yep. All right.
So, again, I'd like to read what Gary said, and I'd like to thank the, the Public Works guys, the rec department guys, and the fire department guys for coming over to help out. I mean, I was extremely impressed as how quick and efficient they were to get in there. Uh, I've been working real hard with the rec department staff, they've been amazing through this whole process to get everything sorted out. So if you guys want to look at the screen, I'll give you a quick display of the equipment that we did pull out of there. The rec department staff did clean it all up and lay it out on the tables and taken actual inventory of exactly what we have, so we know what we're dealing with. So it's all been laid out in an easy way to see. Some of these items have been cleaned and moved since the pictures were taken, but you get a general idea of what, what we've removed.
So Jason, what are your thoughts, what are your thoughts on how we might structure the sale of items? And you, you know, sometimes you, you, pounds or banks might put this stuff out, they bid as a package, sometimes they might put it into smaller packages, or it could be accepting offers, what are your thoughts for how we might be able to sell this equipment?
So, I've actually been in contact with quite a bit of restaurant owners and, and other places, Four Seasons Lodge and those places. And they've all given me an idea of what they like and, and what, how much they want to spend for it. I think, rather than trying to go out and getting a full bid for everything, I think it'll be easier if we do it in kind of a, I hate to say garage sale style. Where it's make it fair for everybody, first come, first served. So we, I'm just going to throw dates out there, but let's say Friday, we say, we're going to entertain businesses coming in Friday morning to take a look at the equipment, and everything would be priced out to a fair market price, and, and that would be the price of the equipment. You know, some of the things we look at, as you look at some of these pictures, you see that, well, you know, some of this equipment is, is quite dirty and, and I'm not going to pay a full price because it's quite dirty. But the rec staff has been very vigilant about cleaning every single piece. And you look, and I've got some before and after pictures. You know, you look, you look at a table like here that came out of the restaurant, and then you look at what the rec department did with it after they cleaned it. And it's, I mean, it's, it's immaculate, they, they did an amazing job, whoops. So what I'm proposing is that we come up with fair market value prices on the items. We allow on a first big, come first serve basis for the businesses to come in, look at the prices, look at what they want. And make deals with them where if they're going to buy, you know, I've, I've had one party who's interested in a fryer and a whole bunch of dishes. So make a little bit of a deal with them to say, okay, if you're going to get the fryer and the dishes, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll work with you on, on the price, to get a decent price out of it. And then we can have the rec department, who's also showing interest in, in managing everything for us. So let's take care of documenting who bought what, how much it was sold for, and managing, you know, depositing the money at the town office once it's received to make sure it goes back to the UDAG loan.
Interesting. Anybody else?
Who, who's going to actually be there managing that sale?
Uh, so right now, because the rec department isn't open to events and things like that, the, the staff of the rec department, which would be Sam and Diane, that would be the ones in charge of, of managing the, the items.
So they're going to decide how much to sell, like to make deals with people for, that, that, the deal part is what, like, I'm like.
What puzzles me too, really.
Right, yeah. No, not necessarily, so we would have to either give, you know, a board member or Gary the authority to work with these businesses who say, well, you know, you're listing the fryer at a three hundred, four hundred dollar price range, if I buy the fryer and all of this stuff with it, can you guys work with me on a price? And something like that, it wouldn't be the rec staff who, who are doing that. You know, and, and, and it is, because you can find something at fair market value, but it might not really be worth that to, you know. And, and we don't want to lose a sale just because they want to save twenty dollars on a four hundred dollar item and, and we send them out the door. So that's why I'd like to reserve some leeway for either, you know, one of the board members or Gary to manage, you know, hey, if somebody wants to work out a deal, let's, let's work a deal out with them.
I, I'm not concerned about losing the sale, about not making a deal, to be honest with you. My first thought was, who are you going to put in that situation? Like, I'm not asking a staff member to be in that situation and then have people mad and, oh, well, they sold, like, you know, you know that we're either going to be. It's either we said we're not fair to one business over another, or we gave this one a better deal than we gave that one, or this one, oh, I told you I wanted that. Or there will be maybe a taxpayer who feels like we didn't get enough for it, I, I don't want a staff member to be stuck with that, that's all. I don't want that.
That's why we wouldn't leave it up to the staff.
That, that issue on their back.
I, I.
The other thing too, and then.
I think that, oh, go ahead. Excuse me, go ahead, I'll, I'll go after it.
Yeah, what I was going to say is, we, I did throw around the idea of, well, well, let's do it by bidding, or let's do it by this, but I think the first come, first served basis is you're going to have these business owners who say, well, I really want that, but I can't make it till three weeks from now. And then we're sitting on that, they show up three weeks later, and, oh, I really don't want it. So that's why doing it a first come, first served basis, we open at nine o'clock, you come in here, you, if you don't want it for that price, you know, we can make a deal for you, twenty dollars cheaper if you buy all of this with it. And then if they buy what they want, the next business comes in, and you could have two businesses in there at the same time. And this is not just businesses, it would be open to the public as well, you know what I mean? So we're not going to restrict anybody from coming in and wanting to buy, buy items. But we'll have to make sure we control, you know, we don't want to have thirty people in there at one time. We'd have to kind of limit it to maybe five to six people in the building at one time, because the stuff is tightly encased and it's much easier for the staff to track who's buying what, if, if we limit how many people go in at one time. So if ten people show up, well, the first five who showed up, go in, get your stuff, and as they come out, you let another one in.
So what if we, what if, because I'm a little worried about, my biggest concern is somebody's going to say, well, I didn't get to the door first and the, the thing that I wanted, somebody ran to and, and snatched it right up and it never got a chance. So what if, just a fool for thought, what if we, we, we know we're going to establish a price that we want? What if we just put price tags on, on the items and give it an item number and somebody who comes in can look at it, and they can decide for themselves if they want to give more than that, if they're worried about not getting that piece, that would give us perhaps a chance at getting a little bit more money. And conceivably, we're going to have some stuff that probably won't sell. Uh, and that could be considered like the deal making pieces, if you will, if we want to work. After we, we review all of the, the offers, if you will. That would give everybody a chance to go in there, fair shake at all of the, all of the pieces. As opposed to first come, first served and then the third person in, you know, gets, gets the crumbs, if you will. That, that's going to be the people we're going to hear from, the ones that are not happy with the process. But it's just a fool for thought, I'm putting it out there and we'll, we'll, I'll, you know, I'll go along with any, anything. Go ahead.
I was, I was thinking, not exactly how Gary was, because, I don't know, in my mind, like I was thinking Chinese auction, which is, that's kind of not the same exact thing. But I was thinking like, it should be open from this time to this time, and you could have a line, just like when people come to vote, like, yeah, you'll have to wait and everybody gets a certain amount of time to make it fair, but I think like Gary said, everybody should have a chance to, you know, here's the minimum bid, what's your bid? And whoever bids the highest, it's theirs, I, I feel like first come, first served is.
Can really create trouble.
It's good, I think that could get us in a lot of trouble and be a little unfair to somebody who's, you know, working until two o'clock. You know, the person.
It's almost like a Black Friday at Walmart, there people would be lined to the door.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't.
At midnight, you know, to be the first one at the door.
I like the bid idea.
Yep, I do too, I, I would rather go that route and, and you know, years ago, when I was with the Rotary, I mean, we used to have auctions every year to, 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 to raise money and. It was fun, it was interesting, and, and people usually enjoyed it. Now, I don't know how many folks are going to show up for, 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 for the items that we've got listed here, but, but, but I think that the auction manner, I think, is the best way to go here without creating too much anger and animosity.
Hey, Jay, a question for you.
Yeah.
How much work would it need to put like a li- a photo library of, of the, of the items where people can view them publicly? We put it on our website with a link or something? And, and, you know, people can, we can say item one, item two, item three, number those, and then have a, have them at least look at things ahead of time. And they can probably look at that and say, wow, yeah, that's something that I didn't like, or this, this item wasn't interesting at all. Would that be a big job? Or would it be a big job for the rec department to, to, to do like a video library of the items?
I mean, we've, we've got a lot of pictures of things in groups, I think individually taking pictures is going to be way too much work and confusing to do. But I think we can provide the, the online pictures, but have people come in person to, to actually do the bids and see the, the item numbers and.
Yep.
So pricing, pricing every item there, is that, is that a, a big job?
It'll be quite a bit of a big job, especially putting bid sheets together, bid numbers, and, I mean, it'll be a job, so we'll have to ask the rec if they want it, you know, if they'll be willing to do that.
Well, I think that our, we, our list is going to be, the, the list that we have or that's in front of you or included there has depreciated value. And I think we, I had looked at it, we were negotiating with, with the person that had bought the property, the building. And we had looked at that as being about thirty, depreciating down to thirty percent. And so I don't think we're that far off on the values, and we might, like Jason said, we might put plates and glasses together and forks and knives together and roofings, you know, little sub lots, if you will. And to minimize the, the amount of, excuse me, the amount of items. But it will be too big of a deal, I can think of that over here too, and come up with something in pricing.
Certainly, it, it's a question, Gary, of having somebody go in and, 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 and tag every item there, you know, that's going to be the issue is, you know. I understand that we've got the pricing, but, but somebody would have to go in there and put a price, that price tag on that item.
Yep.
Yep.
If we're going to go through this, I'm just throwing this out there. If the rec department still had any gym equipment that was wanting to be sold, or if any department has like a computer, or a if we're going to go through all this, maybe there's a hand, a couple of the things here and there that we want to add.
Yeah.
You know.
Is that a bad idea?
Um, and I don't mind, just for the, you know, to tell you, I don't mind coming to help price things or, you know, whatever you need, I, I can make some time if you want help.
That'd be great.
My mom's going to bring us some toys and coffee, so. My mom's gonna bring us some toys and coffee and some coffee.
All right, so, so, so the discussion again is, is hard to go about selling these items. The format that I believe we're considering right now is, is somewhat of a Chinese auction format where, where we're gonna put a price item, a price tag on the item and folks will come around and bid on each item, whether they wanna up the bid from what you see on the, on, on, on the, uh, on the item itself, if they wanna up it or not, or, and I don't know how we'll, we'll establish that. They're gonna have to have some kind of sticker with their name with a price on it that they're gonna, they're gonna place on that particular item, but we'll let Jason decide how that, that process will end up working, but...
Well, they can have a, they can have a sheet with all the numbered items.
Yeah, they can, we can give them a click, we can give them...
Write it on the sheet and they turn the sheet on in when they leave.
Ah, so we could do it with a sheet format where, where whatever item they wanna bid on, the price would be next to it and they would just write their bid on, on that particular item. Yeah, that's probably a little bit easier.
Do you wanna do it blindly or do you wanna do actual sheets in front of each item that they can see the current bid?
Well, I think you have an item number, like, uh, the fryer's item number one. This is what our minimum bid is, this is the minimum that we're gonna take. So don't, don't offer us fifty bucks.
I, I understand that.
And then they have their paper in their hand, so blind, yes, and they would write their bid and they'll give it to the rec as they leave.
Yeah. So the issue I see with that compared to doing it where they can see what the current bid is and bid higher if they wanted to, is that if I go in there and I bid fifty dollars for something and my mom goes in there and she bids fifty dollars for something and you go in and you bid fifty dollars for that same item, who gets it? That's why if you do, rather than doing it blind, you do a paper that says, okay, for this certain item, here's your sheet, oh, I'm gonna put my bidding number and my amount on, on the paper and then, you know what I mean? So you're not gonna have double bids. You're gonna have, oh, well, yeah, I'm willing to pay fifty-five dollars instead of fifty dollars for that, let me put my name there. You know what I mean? It'd be much easier to manage that.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, cause...
That makes sense.
The other, the other scenario just again creates another issue for everybody to come back in and re-bid on, on the item or pass it by and, you know, especially if the, if the bids are identical.
Right, yeah.
As long as everyone gets a fair shot.
Yeah, that's really the big issue.
That's all I want and that it's not on anyone's, you know, back if something goes wrong, except ours.
Yeah. Um, I guess we're, we're going to just, are you gonna present that to us before you, before we decide to go to auction with this, or are we accepting that idea right now? I mean, I don't mind accepting the idea right now, but...
So here, here's, here's my thought. We have a little bit of work ahead of us to come up with prices and, and it's gonna give us a bottom number. And so, and I don't think in this, you know, I, I think we could afford to hold off a little bit. Um, you, you know, this could be thirty...
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna put Gary's desk into sale while he's off.
I think, I think we lost Gary.
So what happens if somebody comes in and puts a bid of six thousand for everything?
It would give the board the opportunity to, uh, see what the number is. We could potentially get it, solve everything at, at the minimum.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think for, for the minimum bid, Gary, I, I think going with the thirty percent might be too high. I think maybe for the minimum bid, we'd go in thirty-five percent, cause from the offers that I've been getting for some of these local businesses, it's pretty close to the thirty percent, if not a little bit lower, so...
Okay.
I think just as a starting bid, we might have to go thirty-five just to get an interest on, on the, some of these items.
Yep.
That's, I mean, that's up to the board.
You mean, go down by thirty-five percent or, or thirty-five percent of the original?
So, if thirty, thirty-five percent, uh, below?
Cause thirty-five percent of the original is higher than, than thirty percent, so...
Depreciate it by thirty percent. Yeah, yeah. You depreciate it by thirty, not thirty percent of the original cost. You depreciate it by thirty or thirty-five percent.
Well, that, that's, what you're saying is that, that it's only seventy percent depreciated or, or eighty-five percent, well, thirty percent depreciated means there's seventy percent of the value still out.
Right.
So what are you saying?
So for example, just cause the prices we looked at for the, for the whole lot, we looked at thirty percent depreciation. And I think that's what we should continue to do for this, to, to get that bottom figure.
Okay.
So if you wanna do math on one of them, for example...
So take a hundred dollar item.
So a hundred dollar item.
Thirty bucks.
Yeah, thirty bucks. So if I'm looking, yeah.
And depreciating to thirty, you're depreciating to thirty percent.
Right, and that would, that would be, that would be the bottom figure. So people would start...
That would be the core.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm clear with that.
Well, that's what I thought you were saying and then, but you said thirty-five, which would be higher, so, okay, I'm good.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's fine. Um, Gary, could you put out an email to all the department heads, which most of them are here anyway, but um, just to see if they have items that, you know, they wanna get rid of? And then I think we have to make a decision of what we're doing with the money. We didn't talk about, does this go back into U-DAG? If the rec sells gym equipment, does that go to the recs? Um, that should go to their equipment fund probably. Like, I think that decision will have to be made.
Well, they, they already have, the U-D, the money from this equipment has to go back to U-DAG, but like, the gym already has a process that they follow when they sell gym equipment and most of the departments...
Well, I just wanna make sure, cause what if, you know, what if Kevin wants to sell a plow or, I don't know.
They should go back to their department. Yeah, we should go back to their department.
If it goes back to their department, Kevin might sell his desk and his computer and, never know.
With, with that said, the one thing I wanna say is if we do allow other departments to bring stuff to the sale, we need to send a dead, set a deadline that after the sale ends, they need to get that equipment out of there. So the rec is not, I mean, the rec's doing us a favor by managing all this stuff in, in their, uh...
Yeah, that goes for...
We don't wanna leave all that stuff behind.
So what, so what does happen now with, with items that don't sell?
We'll see what's left and if other departments use them, we'll...
Yeah, we'll see what's left and figure it out at that point, but...
You know?
But that's, you know, one of the other things too, that some of this equipment could be valuable now before the sale to some of these, you know, town departments where, uh, for example, the, the rec has a food program where they need to go out and buy some of these items to continue their food program for next year. Would, you know, do we wanna offer them a extremely discounted price compared to the thirty percent? Or do we wanna say, take, I mean, how are we gonna deal with that, where we could actually be saving money out of their budget by allowing them to, some of these departments to take stuff?
I, I perceive that, that when we've depreciated these items as much as we have, that it would be fair for any department to purchase them at, at, at that price. I mean, I don't see why. It, it's, it's opening up a can of worms. If we start making different prices for the different departments, I, 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 I fear that thought. I, I don't, I don't like it, but but anyway, I'll, I'll entertain more discussion there, but, but for me, you know, it, it's unfortunate, cause I know that the rec has probably put hours and hours and hours just looking at the way this is displayed, how it's been cleaned, um, that, that they deserve some kind of consideration. I don't know if they're really thinking of looking at any of these items and, they probably are. Um, but to favor them or favor anybody else becomes a, a can of worms to me.
I, I think because it goes back to the U-DAG, it needs to just be in the sale and, and that's it. I mean, I, I don't...
Don't change it. I, I would, I would agree.
I, I mean, the money goes to U-DAG, it doesn't go anywhere else.
That's right. It would not go to the department anyway.
Then, then we should, you know...
Again, so to the U-DAG, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything to the law or, you know, but the U-DAG is not tax, it's not taxed. I wanna say this the right way. It's not monies that were raised through taxes. It's an old revolving loan fund from a program back in the late seventies, early eighties that we've been managing. Uh, and, and we, we've got a principal balance that we have and we lend out money, we collect money, we lose money. Uh, and so that's not, those funds were not derived from taxes, property taxes. That's why I'm saying. It is, it is public money, but it wasn't money derived from, from public taxes. So it should, that, those funds should stay within the, the, uh, U-DAG revolving loan program.
Okay.
Um... I guess I don't need any more discussion and I don't think we need a motion at this point to accept the format that we're gonna use, you're gonna bring it back to us, um, in a manner that's fair for everybody?
Yeah, well, do we need to come back or we just lay it out now with the details and let it take off?
Unless, you know, I, I'm, I'm good either way, um, if we're ready for that. Um, Gary, do you, do you prefer any, uh, any format here? I mean, there's a few that have been discussed, though. I like the option.
No, I mean, the, uh, doing the bid, the, uh, minimum bid thing, to me, works whether we do it blind or we do it open, bids visible, so, so we don't get a tie, if you will. It might get us, it might get us a little more money not doing it blind. Who knows? Um, I'm, I'm open to either, either of those two.
All right, so let's, let's, let's establish right now that, that we will, um, start with a minimum bid and how the auction goes, we'll, we'll proceed as, as we see best.
Yeah.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we had a, we had a, a vote last time or the time before to have, let Jason and Gary come up with something. We've kind of given them direction of what we're thinking. Um, I don't know if we need more than that.
To be more, uh, explicit than that.
Okay.
And I don't mind helping. We're all, you know...
Yeah, I think it might be a good idea to come up with a date and we go out there and we'll have to space things out more to, to fit the bid format and make some more room to have the, the items, the bid sheets and there are some items that will have to break up. So for example, there's, uh, pans. You know, there's like fifty pans. Well, would we rather break that into two groups of twenty-five pans and have two separate bids? Or, cause somebody might not want fifty pans, you know, things like that. Um, if you look at, uh, let's say, like, the glasses here. You know, there's a lot of glassware. Do we wanna bid the entire set or break that glassware into two and say, you know, here's half the amount for this, half and half. If somebody wants to bid on both of them, they can, but I, I don't know, just, I'm asking, uh...
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll allow you guys to make that decision, uh, when, when, when the process starts and you guys can decide. I don't think there's any more action that we need to do on Article Nine.
So we have a motion and a second. What do we need to do then? Do we need to...
That was just for discussion. We really didn't have a motion to do anything.
I would just say that you go ahead and make your motion to authorize, uh, whether you want to go ahead and, uh, establish the pricing, uh, at, at roughly thirty percent, uh, depreciation, or depreciated to thirty percent. Let us go ahead and do the work, uh, and get things grouped, uh, and start structuring that. We'll get a, we'll get a number of what that needs, uh, on paper, so we can, you guys will have a chance, obviously, to see that, what that number looks like. Uh, the whole bottom, if you will, uh, we'll get potentially re-coop if we're to sell at, for the minimum. Uh, you'll get a chance to see that before the sale. So I guess that's pretty much all it is. That's all we're looking for at this point.
Before I, before I move forward with that, with the motion here, when do you perceive that we're gonna actually do this auction?
I know some of the business owners who contacted me wanted it sooner than later, so I guess we can start working on getting the bid sheets created, getting the stuff spaced out, getting things set up and hopefully within a week or so.
So really, I mean, we, we're not going to reconvene here about this issue again?
Right.
You guys are gonna be ready before we have another meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, but, you know, Gary mentioned waiting till it's a little warmer in there. Um, I, I mean, I, I, you can do it that fast if you want to, but I, if there's other things that we wanna give Gerald and everyone else time to look, I don't know. I mean...
Yeah, the people who showed interest are interested now, you know, they're, they're looking at, and I'd hate to lose those deals because they don't, you know, they're gonna go out and buy it somewhere else instead.
Yeah.
So what, three weeks? The end of March? Somewhere near?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, that's what I would say. As soon as we're ready, you know, put out a date and get, you know, maybe when we are ready, give it three or four or five days of, of warning to the public saying, you know, make a you know, article in the newspaper. I don't know how we wanna advertise that, but at least advertise it ahead of time, so it's, we don't advertise it today and it opens tomorrow. You know what I mean? Give it a couple of days of people hearing about it.
In the paper and on the app?
Yeah, well, the app is ready.
Okay.
All right. So, 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 so the motion again will read that we are going to, uh, um, offer these items, um, at a, a rate that's depreciated to thirty percent. And...
Roughly.
Yeah, roughly.
Roughly, and, um, that we are going to try to get everything ready for the next three weeks. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I mean, we'll start when it's ready, so, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So I'll let Lori know when we're ready to do the work and she can come help.
Yeah, yeah, give me a holler. Give me a holler too. Yeah, I'll go up and help. You bet. All in favor? opposed? Gary? What was that, Article Nine? Article Ten, to consider public works, department bids for the town's twenty-one, twenty-two roads and streets paving project.
So I'm sharing another screen now. Uh, it's the same what you had in your packet. Of, of the bids that were received and I'm gonna walk you through, I'm gonna walk you through this a little bit, um, so you get a, a good understanding of, of what, uh, how this works. So we received three bids, uh, last Friday at ten A.M. Uh, the board chairman was, was, was able to, uh, be there for the bid opening. Uh, public works director, finance director, uh, myself, I assume, did, uh, and others. Uh, we received three bids on that project. Um, and the low bidder on that came in at eighty-six thirty-five per ton. Now, and we had another, and that was start of our construction. Um, then we had another bid by northeast paving, which is formerly Lane, at ninety-three ninety per ton. And then Trombley Industries at one oh six thirty-five per ton. Now, what you see here on this, on this bid summary sheet is just estimates, it's sort of a planning document that ties into this, to the detail page of the streets that we, uh, have in inventory that we'd like to pay, um, in the roads. So the way that this bid structured, it's built, it's got an escalator built into it. Um, you can either, you know, big projects like this are either bid it out, give us a price per ton fixed or a price with an escalator. And what the escalator does is, is this, I'm gonna refer you back to, what is my third tab, and it's the escalator, uh, liquid asphalt escalator worksheet. So what happens is when we receive a bid, um, we base our asphalt price, this is what we pay per ton, right here, eighty-six thirty-five. If that's the bid we're gonna go with. On the week or the day of the bid, the contractors look to the state of the N-D-A-T, um, for, uh, in their, uh, system for a weekly, uh, price for liquid asphalt that's established. And so the price for that week was five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents per ton of liquid asphalt. So the way the, the way the escalator works is, is basically, um, you know, this is the item number, this is the nine point five M of, of asphalt, that's a DOT spec, um, this is the number of tons. If on this whatever particular week we're in, the, the base price that's established, uh, on the state website is five hundred and thirty dollars per, per ton for liquid, they get in a rate which is six point eight percent, uh, six point eight percent. And there's an adjustment per ton. So what happens is if you see over here, the price went up from five hundred and twelve fifty to five hundred and thirty dollars. Okay, the calculation would increase the ton and it would add a dollar and nineteen cents to the, uh, to the cost of the ton of asphalt put down. Uh, if the price, conversely, if the price goes down below, if it went to five hundred dollars, it would result in a, a decrease in the price per ton in, in asphalt. And so I, uh, you know, we got our specs from the state of Maine. They use this, this process. I wanna show you what we, I provided you, I don't, I'm not gonna have it here, uh, but you have a history of the prices of liquid asphalt in being going back to two thousand and nineteen. This is, uh, this years, you can see the prices starting to trend up because of what's going on in, in, in the oil right now. The oil is starting to creep back up a little bit. But if you go back on the, uh, some of the items that I added in the other business, at the bottom of the, the packet, if I can have you send out, you can see the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty pricing for asphalt. And I don't think the price was ever above, uh, five hundred and fifty dollars per, per ton for liquid asphalt. So I wanna show you right there... So I want to show you right there at $550, just assume that the price would go, in fact, go up to, for a week, for one week, every period. That would add $2.55 to the ton for the cost of the asphalt, which is still a great pricing. I spoke to, I spoke to somebody in Augusta yesterday on this, questions about the specs in this worksheet right here. So I made a call down there and I spoke to a gentleman and he was curious to know what we had got for bids. And when I told him that we got a bid price of 86.35, he said that you were doing fantastic at that price, in fact. And the gentleman kind of chuckled because I think they paid quite a bit more because they have a pretty high standard, a high spec, they'll make a contractor tear out and regrow on roads if they have. I think that the vendors factor that, that into their pricing per ton, if you will. So that's how this is going to work. I feel really good about it. I think we got in at a good time as prices are going up. And you can see right here that if, this is without the escalator, if we were going to do all these projects, I'm going to go back to the detail, we were going to do all of these projects, I'm not saying that we will, this is just a planning document. We have a budget, right, and we have a $3 million bond, and we're going to need about, I'm going to say $10,000 roughly for bond council and legal, and we're going to need, Kevin's going to need, I don't know, Kevin, what are you thinking, maybe $50,000 for shoulder material to build up, back up our shoulders? So I'm saying that, you know, out of that $3 million, we're probably going to want to reserve $100,000 for other work, like storm drain risers and things like that, other materials that we're going to need to purchase. But just for the sake of giving you an idea, whoops, hold on here. Right now, at that 86.35 rate without any escalator, okay, for the liquid asphalt, assuming we did all these projects, these don't revolve here or not included, these are projects that we don't need to do, the 18th act, the Fox Street, we go to the Y District, got some work to do over there, so we're going to wait for them to do their work before we will put them on top, obviously, but we're just under $3 million. So I did have it in your agenda pack, did you guys have any questions before I move on a little bit about how this works? The way that we put out the bid, we did it, we advertised it in the paper, and I also emailed four paving companies that could do this project, large companies that actually make hot top and paint, and they were Steelstone, Trombley, doing this paving in Soderbergh. They were all emailed at the same time, they'd received the bid package at the same time. I put a tracking on the email, we request read and delivery receipt, so I know that they all had a chance to see who was receiving a copy of this bid packet. And I know that they all received a copy of the bid packet. There's no question as to whether or not someone was left out, we made sure that we covered our bases in that. So I feel really good, I feel really good about that. At this time, you guys can interrupt me here at any time. I'm going to stop sharing the screen and then go back to here. You can see the history of the prices for liquid asphalt, 2019, the highest was $500. 2020, well, actually, 552, we'll say the high.
That's the highest, I saw.
552.50.
Yeah.
And then obviously with this year. Now, the way that works, on Monday, the state of Maine posts, either Monday or Tuesday, early Tuesday morning, they post on their website, this is actually on the state of Maine's website, the average price for the week. So when we, Kevin collects all of the wait lists, which are dated, so for the given week, whatever is put down for tonnage in that week, we're going to utilize whatever price for the liquid asphalt that was posted on Monday for that period. So it's posted on Monday for the week moving forward, and that changes from one week to the next, it's all market. I did indicate to the low bidder that we were going to be reviewing this, that's the email here. I did mention to them that we're going to ask them for big bond, big performance on the project, because the size of the project is a requirement for borrowing, in that we would have, be working on contract in companies. This is the, this is where we get our specs from the state of Maine that we asked them to refer to for the escalator. This is the different kinds of asphalt, excuse me, products that are put down, they have them coded by item number, you can see there in parentheses is what the product is. And then down below, these are the rates, the multipliers, if you will, that are part of the escalator worksheet. So our item is the 403 dot 210, and the escalator there is 6.2%. That's what we put in the bid spec, and that's what we're going off. Any questions?
Gary?
Yeah?
I don't understand how these rates get determined when the work actually starts. I mean, do they look at this every single week as the work is getting done and they work out the percentage up or down at that time? Is that how they do it?
Yeah, so what happens, Doug, I'll go back to this right here. If you look up on the screen, the escalator worksheet. So let's say, for instance, Trump, Soderbergh puts down 1,000 tons of asphalt on the week of July 1.
Okay, so it's pronounced on that week.
We're going to pay it at 86.35 per ton, that's 500 tons.
Yep.
And then we're also going to look at the market for liquid asphalt.
Yep.
Because this was the rate at the date of bid, established by the state of Maine, that's our base. So from there, we figure out if there needs to be any adjustments, the price of asphalt. When below this liquid asphalt or when above this, we would plug this in here and that would tell us for that week what the rate per ton is going to be.
So they establish, they establish how much they put down on that particular week and you calculate the price?
Yes.
You get the weight slips right from the trucks, right, to deliver it. When the truck delivers the asphalt, he collects the weight slips for that week.
Okay, that's how it's done?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, Kevin, you can jump in, you're in time.
Kevin said you covered it all.
Okay.
So Kevin and I, Kevin has gone through the bids, and like I said, we, I wanted to give a good summary for you guys as a board to leave. You know, it's a big decision, obviously, it's a lot of money, it's an important project, and I wanted to make sure that you had all the information to understand how this product, this service, this product is going to be paid for. And we feel really good about where we ended up with this, but actually, especially after I spoke to the gentleman from state of Maine yesterday. I think if we would have not gone with an escalator, with the market volatility right now, the price of oil going up, they would have, we probably would have seen prices well over $100 a ton to do this job, because that would have been a gamble for them. So this gives, this escalator gives some security to the contractor, if you will, you know, it's going to allow them to maintain their margin, their profit margin, without taking too much of a gamble. And for us, it gives us a little bit of assurance to keep our price down as much as possible.
Does, you know, now that Soderbergh has seen these bids here, I mean, can they just decide to back out of this bid?
You know, I have not had that ever happen to me before, I'm not saying that it never happened, but they've given us a price and they're excited about it, they know, you can see the email that you have, they're excited to work with us. So I don't see, I don't see that they're going to be pulling their bid from us.
Well, they can certainly see that they left a lot of money on the table.
Well, if you keep talking about it, yeah, then you're going to.
Why don't you just call them, Doug, and tell them?
All right, so, all right, yep, go ahead.
I guess already I'd be willing to make a motion.
Yep.
So I'd make a motion to accept the bid from Soderbergh Construction for the paving project at the full price specified.
Very good, is there a second? All in favor? opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So, okay, give them a moment.
Article 11, consider board budget meetings dates for this year '22, Town and Manowaska Budget. So we need to start thinking about meetings here.
So I want to ask the board, Carol and I have met, first day of Zoom with the department heads, we've gone over budgets, so we're not 100% done, but it's not going to take much to be ready for our next meeting. I guess what we need to decide, or what the board needs to decide is, do you want to have board meetings that are just dealing with budgets? Or do you want to do some, a little bit of town business and work on budgets in our next meetings coming up? I know we wanted, we got this meeting done here, you know, so we could get some of the business out of the way, so I think we've accomplished that. We could probably have a meeting or two in my mind in the next couple of weeks, probably in two weeks from now, get the information to you guys in advance of that, and then maybe tackle, you know, a handful of departments per board, per board meeting, if you will, budget meeting.
Well, can I have a discussion, can I have a motion to discuss this article?
Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion to discuss.
Motion, so we have a second? Yep.
So I guess, me personally, it'd be easier to have one long meeting with town stuff and budgets rather than try to schedule two or three short meetings in a week to do town stuff this day and budget stuff the next day.
Oh, goodness. Lori?
I'm sorry there, I was thinking totally opposite of that. For me, and it's just my, I mean, we all have an opinion, right? For me, we're going to be asking the department heads to come and meet with us. I feel like it worked very well last year to have the finance committee here at the same time, that way the department head only had to answer the questions one time, we all heard the same thing, then we separated, finance committee did their thing, we did our thing. Having everybody come sit through board meetings and all of that, I just think is not fair. I don't, I mean, the first, maybe after we've gone through it, I can see that, but having the finance committee and the department heads all have to sit through board meetings that they don't want to be at, you know, I didn't think, and then I also, I guess I could, I'd like to have, if you have it, hopefully the whole packet at once. Like, I don't know if I'm asking for too much, but like last year, we got, you know, the list of capital at one point and something else, and income and another, and for me, like I need that number, like I just can't think like that, I have to have the whole number and then go backwards. So if I'm asking too much, then okay, but.
No, I don't think that's going to be a problem with the board.
So I don't know, that's just my opinion about meetings, I don't know if.
You know, honestly, to have a meeting.
Carol's right there behind you, I think, or is, Carol, you can chime in too, anytime.
To have, to have a meeting, you know, to try to get through the whole budget within one meeting, within an hour or two, you start, you start losing, you know, people's interest and it just, I am aware of the mind that we separate these budget meetings, at least two or three of them to get through the first pass and then beyond that, and see how easily or if we have any problems and we really need to consider, but that would be my intent.
I.
Anybody else?
I think, I think if we're just working on, just focusing on budgets.
Yep.
We could probably split this out into three meetings, always would be three fairly lengthy meetings.
Yep.
With the finance committee. I'm okay with that, but I mean, we're probably looking at meetings that are already being three hours long at a minimum. But, you know, it's, working with the finance committee right now on the eighth, week six, we need to have the department come back in twice if they don't have to.
Okay, I would entertain.
I mean, that's not, and listen, that's not to say that if there's something really pressing that comes that the board could need some board action, we could stick an article along the agenda, add a budget meeting and do that. You know what I mean? I mean, we don't have to do minutes and we board, but if there's something that came in that was pressing that I needed the board to act on, I mean, obviously, the board could always enter key, an article or two of regular town business, just for the sake of, you know, moving things along.
Jason, did you want to amend that motion or do you want to stick with it and we vote on it up or down or?
My motion was just to discuss.
Okay, so it was just to discuss.
I don't think we need to make a motion, we just have to set dates, I mean, that's.
Well, the process right now is still that we're going to have three meetings and I'm hoping that the board agrees with that, that we're going to have three budget meetings separate of any other town business.
I don't know if it'd be smart to make a motion on it, because if we make a motion for three meetings and if something happens, we have to vote for.
Well, then, then.
I think all we need to do is.
We don't need, if we don't need to act on it, then we don't need to act on it.
Yeah, I think you just set our game.
I would just say, I would just say that let's see if we can find three meetings that work for all of us.
Yeah.
Are you, so we should establish that this evening?
I think so.
So how soon are you ready to start, Gary?
Yeah.
Carol, what are your thoughts?
We still have to go off for some bids on some contracts that are expiring, so give us about a week, week and a half would be great.
What about something like, you know, let's say Wednesday, the 24th is our first one? That gives them.
That gives them over, a little over two weeks?
Yeah.
Or the 17th, I mean, that doesn't matter to me.
What do you think, Carol?
I think, I think we could probably do some, we could probably hit some on the week of the 15th, we could do like Tuesday, the 16th, I'm open, and I think we can do the following week on the 23rd, I'm open, and then maybe on the 30th, bang, 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 three Tuesdays in a row? Or do you want to do two in one week somewheres?
I'm not available on the 16th, Tuesday, the 16th, so we have to do it the 17th on Wednesday.
So the 17th then?
17?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll have to wear green in St. Patrick's Day.
You have to color your hair. So the 17th, the 23rd, and the 30th is the consideration, is that seem to work for everybody? Yeah?
What time?
What's a good time, 5:30?
Well, if we're going to have a potentially three-hour meeting, I guess if you want to work backwards, how late do you want to stay?
Yep, I could easily change that, I mean, I have no trouble going to 4:00 or 4:30 if somebody, yep.
You have people in the finance committee that, like we, yeah, I don't. You're, you have people on the finance committee that, like, we, yeah, I don't.
I, I think, I think four-thirty would be the, the earliest we could probably start. Based on the, based on the, some of the people on the finance committee and when they get out of work.
I'm, I'm open here, whatever you, whatever.
I prefer five if possible.
Five o'clock?
Yeah, I get out at four, so by the time I get home, it changes in here.
Okay.
So five o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, moving on, article what, eleven? Article twelve. Consider an appointment for vacancy on the finance committee.
So we have a, Jessica Blaylock, we have a vacancy on the, on the finance committee, nobody stepped up in, in, to nominate anybody at the floor of the town meeting, nobody offered themselves to be on the finance committee, so we have a vacancy. Uh, that according to our bylaws, when you have a vacancy, the board will appoint. So at this point, we have a Jessica Blaylock, who's expressed interest in the finance committee. Uh, and it will be up to this board if they would like to appoint Jessica to be on the finance committee.
Yep.
We have another individual that has expressed to myself interest in being on the finance committee. Gary Dufour.
Okay. Anybody else? We're gonna need to vote on this now.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Gary Dufour to the finance committee.
I'll second that. Any, any discussion?
I'm, I have nothing against Gary, it's just, I mean, it's the first I hear that he's interested in, and, um, he's already on the planning board and Jessica wants to serve, so I'm gonna vote for her only for that reason.
All right, so the first name that was mentioned to us was Jessica Blaylock, so all in favor of Jessica being on the finance committee, raise your hand.
I've got a motion for Gary right now.
You put a motion up for Gary?
Yeah, for Gary, he made a motion and a second, and I was just discussing.
Okay, so we have a motion for Gary, so all in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Two opposed? So, did you, you did not vote?
Yeah, I did.
Raise your hand.
I raised my hand, four.
Four? So there were what? Three, two? Two, two to two?
Three to two.
Three to two?
No, three, that's.
Three to two? So Gary is appointed on the finance committee. Okay, so article, yep, article thirteen. To consider request for proposals for financial auditing services.
So you have a, Carol's worked to craft an RFP for auditing services, typically towns will do this, then we'll go out to RFP every, you know, handful of years. It's, it's a job to bring on a new auditor, uh, it's a job for the auditing firm to acquire a new client and build their, the, the database. Uh, and it's also a job for the municipality, the finance department, to work with a new auditor to, uh, to do the same. And so we typically, we stay with an auditor for a period of three or five years, maybe more, to try to get a sense for, bring some stability, uh, 'cause bringing a new auditor does, does bring in more work for the, for the finance department that first year. We know that. But it's been a while since we had gone out to RFP and we're thinking that we would probably wanna do that this year. And so the audit is, is a function, it was done for the board of selectmen. So that's why we crafted it for you, for your approval, if you do want to approve the, uh, request for proposals, then we would go out considering, uh, RFP, uh, that RFP, those proposals would come back for your review at a later date. Uh, and we would typically ask for three, three years of pricing, obviously, and going back to what I just said, uh, an RFP company would, would not really wanna just take this on as a year-by-year thing, because they have a lot of work to do, to build a new client, a database, uh, and likewise for us too. So what we're looking at is a proposal for three years of services, and, and, and sometimes it goes beyond that. Uh, that has been the case with, with the auditing firm that we are with right now. Any questions? Carol, and you can add in here if you want to.
So I, I made a motion that, um, we, um, go out to bid for the annual independent audit service.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. So we're back to the town app. Yep.
I still have some questions, and the reason I didn't get back to you prior to today is because I only get my information today, I don't know what this discussion is going to entail, but, uh, I did speak with Selectman Laurie, where after the fact, when we, when we first went into a, a discussion about this business venture, we, we went into executive session, is that correct?
Concerning what? The app?
Yes. See, I, I, I don't know how much information that we're able to divulge at this point. Is this out in the open now?
No, all that we're discussing right now is, is, is the app itself now that it's, that it's been created.
Okay, but, but, but i- is the whole business venture something that the board is able to speak about publicly?
That's what we're gonna be doing this evening.
Okay.
Correct.
So the, the intention of this, of this meeting here was to demonstrate the features of the app to the board, and get final approval of the app before it gets published to the public. That was what the intended.
That's, that's all that we're doing, we're not doing anything.
My discussion with Laurie, uh, it was an after-the-fact thing, where I questioned, I questioned the, the, the specific reason why we went at this in executive session. Laurie, am I correct in my understanding of what you told me? That somebody, I don't know if it's Gary, or Doug, or yourself, reached out to the town attorney, Edmund Behr, uh, to, to ask if this was to be discussed in executive session, is that, is my understanding correct?
I don't, I don't, I don't remember, no, I don't, I don't remember if anyone reached out to Ed, but I, when you and I discussed it, I told you that, um, I as well wondered why we would do that in executive session, but it was explained to me that it was 'cause it, we were gonna use this as an economic development tool, so for now, we wanted to just keep it to ourselves while we were hashing out the details of, of how we were going about it. And I had checked into it myself.
With, with who?
Um, with my own attorney, just to make sure that, 'cause I wanted to feel comfortable, and I often do that sometimes, just because.
All right. Well.
You know, I, if I, if I'm just questioning what I'm doing, I have to feel good, so, I mean, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable that it was fine.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I, so the discussion this evening is, is, is nothing to do with, with anything else other than to introduce the app? That's all that we're doing this evening? The, the discussion right now is to introduce the app.
Again, I reserve the exact same right that Selectman Laurie is expressing right now, to reach out to her own legal counsel of her choice on her dime, and I reserve that same right. Now, I just want to forward to you the information that I got from legal counsel today.
Well.
If we went into.
If you, if you, if you have information that you wanna share with me.
Yes, I do.
If, this would not be the form to do it, you need to do that with me in private, so that we can decide how to act on that.
Mr. Chair?
Well, if, 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 if we're gonna put the town and the taxpayers in jeopardy here for legal ramifications, I think we're making a serious error. When, 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 right now, you are being cautioned to move in that direction based on legal counsel, so I make a motion that we table this matter until we touch base with the town attorney as to whether or not we can discuss this in open session. My advice from my legal counsel is that if, if this began in executive session, it has to be completed and terminated in executive session. So I make a motion that we touch base with legal counsel prior to moving forward, before we get in a pickle.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So we, we first looked at this project in executive session, but we also had a subsequent board meeting after, I don't remember the date, but the board did again look at the project in open session and voted to, to do the project. The person doing the project, Simple Computers One-on-One, Selectman Boucher, uh, did his due diligence and, and disclaimed during the open meeting that he was the provider of the service, uh, he was gonna be providing the product. And he also abstained from the vote, from the vote, and that was an all-in-open session at a subsequent meeting. So the town has met its obligations in regards to conflict of interest. That's really not, what is that for discussion tonight?
Conflict of interest is not the issue here. Conflict of ish, conflict of interest is not the issue.
So, so can you repeat your motion?
My motion is that we table this until we can touch base with legal counsel to protect the town from any legal ramifications for having moved forward to complete this business venture, if you will, outside of executive session. Seeing that we, seeing that we, it was started in an executive session, I was informed that it has to be dealt with to completion in executive session.
Do I have a second? Do you have a little second? Go forward, Jason.
Thank you. Give me a second here while I get prepared. So I apologize that it's not gonna be too big on the screen for you to see, but. So the Town and Madawaska app, uh, the price quote that was provided during the board meeting had a list of some of the features that we were looking at. Well, since then, it's actually evolved quite a bit bigger than that, and, uh, for the same price, we've actually been able to include all of these additional features into the, the app. So this is kind of a demonstration of what the app would look like, how it would work. We are open to suggestions and to changes in look, color scheme, way things are displayed, way things are, are, uh, look in the app. And then we all, you know, we also have the ability to, to think forward and say, well, you know, after the app launches, what if we wanted to add this and this and that? So please, you know, during the, the whole presentation, be candid about how you feel about each page, and if you've come up with ideas that you'd like to see, you know, please share them, because, again, the only way to make this app succeed is to, to allow it to grow into what, you know, it can provide the town, so. If you look on the top-left corner of the, the phone screen, you'll see the little icon there, it's, it's the town logo with an aerial photo of the town in the background, so it, it is a little hard to see on, on the screen, but.
I see, yep.
It's there, so when you launch the town app, uh, you're presented with a whole bunch of different icons, and each icon represents a different part of the town, and we call these different modules. So for example, you've got town news, uh, you've got recreation, code enforcement, uh, you've got police, fire, and ambulance. You have school, the business center, the library, public works, water district, pollution control. And then you have accommodations, where to eat, tourism, then you have a suggestion box and a survey box. So we'll go over in, in detail all the different icons and what they have to, to offer, but we'll start with the town news. So basically, the app is designed that when a person first launches the app, they have the ability to log into the app with either their Google account, their Apple account, or they have the ability to say, I don't wanna log in with any of my personal information, I just wanna skip the login and use the application. So all three of those methods are allowed. The benefit of logging in is it allows you to choose to have notifications sent to you from each of these departments. So if we take the town news, for example, when you click on there, you get a, a feed of all the town-wide news that's going on. So if you look here, you see the second article, Catholic Charities Food Giveaway with a little picture, and then it gives you a little excerpt of what is in that notification. When you click on that, you'll actually get a full-screen view of that event with the picture, and then if you scroll down, you'll notice that it gives you, when the event is, where it is, and it offers you to choose, are you going to this event, yes, maybe, or no? And then it gives you all the details of the event a little bit lower, below that. So this allows the public to see this notification and maybe say, well, you know what, maybe I'm gonna go, so they can click the maybe button, and now you see it registers a one maybe. So before the event even starts, we can get an idea of how many people might be going to this event. We also have the ability to just post a news article, so if you look here, you've got the board of selectmen meeting, which doesn't have that yes, maybe, or no, this is just a single news article with just a very, you know, simple line of message saying, hey, this is when the board meeting is. So what's cool about this is, uh, if you look here at the top-right corner, you're gonna see that, and it's, there's a little bell icon, okay? You can see that the bell is a full-size bell. What that means is if somebody happens to post something in the town news section, even if your phone is turned off and put in your pocket, your phone is gonna ding, and it's gonna say, town news, board of selectmen meeting, or Catholic Food Charities Giveaway, it's gonna give you which module that notification belongs to, and a quick message of what it's about. If you decide, you know what, I don't wanna hear anything about the town news, you can press the bell icon, okay? And you'll see that there's a slash through the bell now, so now you're not gonna get any notification whatsoever from that module. Now, a quick and easy way to do it is if you go back to the main screen and you go to the notifications window, you can actually see every single module, and you can turn off every single notification in one place. So you don't have to jump around and try to say, I don't wanna get any information, or come and say, yeah, well, I'd like to get, you know, notifications for all of these articles, and then, and then submit your, your choice, so that way you could choose whether or not you wanna see certain information. So all of the, all of the modules are basically the same thing, so police, fire, ambulance, town news, they're all news modules that allow you to receive information from the town. But if you click on the police module, you'll also notice at the bottom of your screen, you've got three little lines. This will actually allow a user to, to provide us with information, so if you click on there, you'll see there's a button that says, submit a tip, okay? Now, because I'm logged in as administrator, there's more options that show up there, but each user in town, like the board, the, the department heads, the board of selectmen, the, you know, the town manager, each have different user permissions, and then the townspeople have their own permissions, so they'll see different things on here, depending on who you're logged in as. So a business owner, I'll get you one sec, a business owner who's logged in will have more options to interact with the app than just a regular person who doesn't own a business. Go ahead, Lori.
Um, can those three lines actually say, like, instead of three lines, can it actually be a button for a tip?
Well, because it's more than just a tip line, it's, it's an option menu, and you'll see that it's the same icon in, in different places, because, uh, it's not just a tip line, as you can see here, it's the tip line, it's creating a post, it's creating an emergency alert. If you go to the business app, it's apply for a business, create a special, so, that's why by just creating the button that says tip line, it could be confusing for somebody who's looking for the emergency alerts.
Could you write more, or could you put?
You could.
But it, so here, 'cause I don't know how many times, and you must, you got, you might see it too, you're on Facebook and somebody says, oh, how do I edit this, and you see somebody below saying, well, you go to the three little dots up here, the three little lines, and it just, I don't know.
The three little lines has always been a commonality in applications, just because trying to put the word more in that would be so small that it'd be, you'd have to really look close to see the word more and read it, so.
Okay.
It, it can definitely be done, if that's what the board wants to do, it can definitely be done.
No, just ask, just ask me.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, but that is a possibility. So, yeah, so let's say I click on there and I hit submit a tip, so this is gonna warn the user saying, this is not for an emergency use. If you've got an emergency, please contact the police department directly. So once you click understood, then you can actually punch in some information, so, let's say, for example, somebody sees somebody causing, you know, I don't, I don't wanna point anything out, but somebody dumping snow in somebody else's driveway. Well, you can come here onto the app and provide this as a, you know, hopefully it's crimes, not things like this, but I'm using that as an example, that if somebody sees a crime or something, they don't, you know, they can post it right here on, on the application, submit it as a police tip, so. You know, it's not to be used for things like I saw somebody throw a piece of paper on the ground, and they should be arrested for it. It's more of a little tip line, like, hey, I heard you guys are looking for a person with black pants and white, you know, clothes who stole a car. with black pants and white, you know, clothes who stole a car. I think I saw this person in this area," kind of a tip line. Once that tip has been submitted, it is not visible to the public. It's an anonymous tip line, so that information's not shared with anybody. It shows up on the police department's web portal where they can see all these tips and they can respond to them there. The next item here is the code enforcement tab. So one of the things we want to try to do with this app is allow things for people to do from within the app that they don't have to come to the town office to do, or things they can do on their own. So as an example of that, in the code enforcement tab, you've got two items at the top, you've got news and my permits. So this now allows an individual to click on my permits and see all the past projects that they've done at their location. And then they can, again, Lori's favorite three little dots, or they can click on apply for a building permit. So right through the app, all the fields, and I did work with the code enforcement officer to put this together, right inside the app, all the fields and information and ability to post pictures like you see in the regular app for, application for a permit shows up in this, in this, in the app here. So you can start by saying, "Well, this project name is a swimming pool." But then say, "Oh, shoot, I don't have any of my other information. Let me save and exit for now." And that is now saved here as project swimming pool. So the person can come back later on and say, "Okay, I now know who, you know, who the property owner is. I now know all this information," and they can fill out this form. So everything from who the contractors are, to basic info, locations, setback information, I mean, everything is right here to submit a full building permit. And what that will then allow the code enforcement officer to do is receive that permit, process it, and either contact the person and say, "I need more information," or right from his web portal, approve that permit. And once that permit is approved, the person who used the app now gets a notification saying their permit is now approved. Code enforcement officer prints that off as if it was filled out right there in person and then can file that permit there. So this is only set up, because the app is not set up for payments, to accept payments, this would only be for applications that don't require a payment. If a payment is required, then the person requesting the permit would have to come in and make the payment before the app would be approved. But this is going to help, you know, and this is just one feature that can be incorporated across other departments to allow forms to be filled out and things to be processed without anybody ever having to come in. And then the nice part about that as well is you also have now on your portal, you have all the building permits and whether they're pending, whether they're in progress, or whether they're approved. So you have proof of your building permit on your phone as well. Questions on that?
Nice.
Then we've also got the recreation module. And one of the things that the recreation department has been looking at is how to get people to register online. There's, they have deadlines, they have programs that they do. And one of the things is, "I can't make it because I'm working. Can I leave it in the mailbox and, you know, you register my kids for me and all that?" Well, through the app, the recreation department also has a news section, again, where they can post their news. But now they have the ability for the user to come and register their kids into the application. So as you can see here, I have my two kids who are registered in there with their pictures. So I can click on one of my kids. I can see their emergency information. And I can also see that they've registered for two programs. So they've registered for soccer and they've registered for ice hockey. Their soccer program registration has been paid for, so they're registered. But I haven't paid for the ice hockey one yet, so it still says that it's pending the registration. But then I can click on that ice hockey and see all the details of when it is, where it is, and I can easily see, "Oh, yeah, I forgot I registered for soccer." And then we also have the ability to send notifications saying, "Hey, don't forget tomorrow your son has ice hockey." So with that, we also have the programs tab where you can actually see all the available programs that are available for the rec right now. So I see, oh, indoor tennis was just posted. And again, when the recreation department posts a new program, if you subscribe to the rec department, you'll get a notification. So I can come in here to indoor tennis and I could say, "I want to register my son for that program." Hit register for programs, and it's going to say, "Okay, yep, I want indoor tennis. Review that." It tells me I'm going to owe $25, and I can pay with cash or check. And now it's going to tell me your registration is pending. To complete your child's registration, please go to the recreation department and submit a payment. So now, I have registered my son to that program without ever having to leave the house and go to the rec department. All I have to do now is go drop off the check. And as you saw in there, there was an option to pay with credit card. So that actually opens up the ability that later on in the app, we can open up credit card payments so people can pay through the app without ever having to, you know, to come into the recreation department. So that would be a future enhancement. And it's not like we have to process or collect credit card information. It's all done through the phone. So if you have Apple, it goes through Apple. If you have Google, it goes through Google. So we don't collect people's credit card numbers. It's all done right through their phone, just as if they were going to buy an app in the App Store. So now with that said, a recreation department employee will have the view registered kids button where they can click on there and see any kids who are registered for each of these programs. So that was ice hockey. If I go to soccer, view registered kids, gives me a list of all the kids and their pictures that are registered for that event. So right from their phone, you know, the rec department can see that. And there's also a rec department backend on a website. So all the department heads have a website that they go to to manage all of this. So they're not stuck in front of their phone. They can do it all right from their computer. So again, this recreation module can be enhanced to provide even more services and provide a lot more to the kids. But it allows us to better track who, you know, who, what, when, where, and why for the programs. Questions so far? So again, the next important part, and this is kind of the center of this application. One of the main reasons why we wanted to develop it is we care about our main businesses. We care about what they have, you know, to offer and getting their name out there. So let me just enable this feature. Okay. Let me just mute this. So when you click on the business center, you're actually going to see business center news. So this is news that we can provide to the public about, you know, what's going on in town as far as, hey, maybe a new business signed up. Or maybe we're having a, you know, like when we did the, those special 50-50 gift cards with the different businesses, you know, we can post that. So what that allows a business to do is then click on the business icon. And now here you see a list of all the businesses who have registered. So here you can see Big Ricks. And when you click on Big Ricks in Madawaska, you see all his details. His time he's open, way to contact him, picture of his business, the description. And then you see any specials that Big Ricks is having right now. So you can see here, this was a special he had a little while back. And then you've got, scroll down, oh, now you've got the Madawaska Snowmobile Club. So this is more of a tourism thing, things you can do in town. So this list is just a list of every single possible business that has registered with the app. But if you go to the top of the list where it says all, you can come in here and say, "I only want to see the contractors in Madawaska." And then it's only going to show you the contractors. Or you can go there and choose any other group and it'll list just the items in that, in that category. So then you can also click on specials at the top, and this would just give you a list of all the specials. So if you don't want to go business to business, you can go to the specials. And again, if you've subscribed to the business section, if a business posts a special, then that special, your phone will ding and you're going to say, "Hey, here's a special going on at Big Ricks today." So it kind of gives us a way to help our local businesses, any business in town, to post.
Jason, if I could just stop you for a second. How many categories here do you have?
So, I worked with Gary, he provided me a list of all the categories of what he thought. But there's right now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13.
So there's 13 different categories.
Yeah.
So if I said I wanted just a list of grocery stores?
Yep, so then you would go to the, that'd be retail and convenience. So that would give you all the grocery stores and retail stores in town. And again, this is, this is something that can be built upon. So if we decide we want to add a new category, I saw your hand, Lori. We can add a new category and release that in the next version of the app and bang, there's a new category. So we're not stuck to this list forever. Go ahead.
How are the businesses going to put their information in?
Okay, so with that, if you look at your three favorite little dots in the corner, so if you click on there, it says, "Apply to post a business." So when you click on there, you put in all your business information in the app. Your business name, who the owner is, your contact email, phone number, business description, business hours. You choose the category you want your business to be in. You choose, you can add a whole bunch of different images, different pictures. And then at the bottom it says, "I'm responsible for the content that my business posts." So they're responsible. If they post a special and they post the wrong price and people show up and say, "Hey, you posted it for this price," the town's not responsible for that. So they're responsible for that. Once they've hit submit, in the web backend that the town office manages, they'll get a notification saying that, "Hey, you've got a new business that has registered to be part of the app." So that way the town office can then double-check, is this a legitimate business who's registered to do business with the town, you know? And then say, "Well, is it, you know, if Jason Boucher is applying to be the owner of Big Ricks, we know there's something wrong." So they would have to contact the owner, "Hey, you registered to be part of the app. Here are the rules, here are the regulations, here's what you can and can't post. If you post, you know, something bad, we're going to take your abilities away to post." So once they figure that out, they hit approve, that business now becomes approved and shows up in the app. So the business owners themselves are the ones applying to be part of that. Now, if a business owner is like, "I don't have a phone, I don't want to deal with that," they can call the town office. The town office can add the business themselves for that business owner. So they don't have, they're not stuck to having to use the app to be part of the app. The good features of being part of the app is, on the specials tab, if you have registered to become a business and you're approved as a business, you can post your own specials. So you can come in here now that I'm approved and create a special. And if you're, if you're an owner of multiple businesses, you can actually post two multiple businesses. So in here it's going to say, select the business you want to post to. Say, "I'm going to choose Martin's Motel." I can put in all the information about the special, prices, image, everything, and post that into the special section without having to involve anybody in the town to do it. So that will kind of, that allows the businesses to manage their own information. If they want to change their open hours or change their phone number, they can do that themselves without having to contact the town.
I would think most business owners aren't familiar with apps.
Right, and again, if they're not, like I said, they always have the ability to either stop by the town office or call the town office up and say, "Hey, I want my business to be listed in the app, provide the information." The town office can list them in there.
But I want to be clear, like, we're not saying that the town office staff is going to start posting specials every week for people that do not want to reg, like, the town office will register them, the one-time thing?
Correct.
And that's it, like, we're not going to start...
Correct, the business owners are responsible for posting their own specials.
And it's businesses registered in Madawaska that are, you know, taxpayers of Madawaska, basically? Because it's taxpayer funds and...
Correct, they don't have to be part of any group or anything like that. As long as they're registered as a business in Madawaska, they're fine. Yep, yep. And then that also goes to the tourism section as well. So for example, you've got, you know, the snowmobile club. Well, they're not really a business, but they're a club. That's where this tourism section is. So if you look on the main screen, you've got accommodations, where to eat, tourism. That breaks down the businesses into the three main categories that people would come in here for tourism. So where to stay, where to eat, and things that can be done here in town. So if I click on tourism, you're going to see all the news for the local tourism. And then if you click on locations, you'll see the locations that belong to that tourism section. So you'll see the snowmobile club, and then under news, we can post things that are happening that, you know, like a Cajun congress comes in here. Well, that would be something good to post in tourism. So you can post that in the local tourism news, things like that. The where to eat would show you all the different food locations. My internet's a little bad here today, but... And then the accommodations would show you all the different accommodations, like Martin's Motel and things like that. I think I just lost the internet. Now, the suggestion box is something that allows the public to post a suggestion to the town. So if they have a suggestion, you know, it'd be nice to have this in the parks. It'd be nice to have that special event. It'd be nice to hold these, you know, ceremonies. That can all be posted to the town through that suggestion box. With the school, we're working on an automated way for the school to be able to, once they send out their email notifications, that it would automatically come here into the app as well. So that's something that's in the process of being worked on right now. Then you've got, you know, public works, water district, pollution control. Those are all just regular news modules. So again, you know, some pipe breaks down on Sixth Ave. You know, they can post, "Hey, pipe broken on Sixth Ave, you may lose your water." So that way, you'll get a notification, or like today with the roads being bad, you know, public works might want to make a post, or the police department might want to make a post saying, "Hey, roads are bad, you know, please stay off the road, stay home." And they get a notification for that. One of the additional features that we've actually placed into the police department app is, I don't know, if most of you probably received an emergency alert today from Aristoc County. Well, we've incorporated that into the app. So the police department can actually send out emergency notifications through the app that bypasses the notification settings. So if somebody downloaded the app, but they turned off all notifications, the police department would have the ability to send out an emergency notification that would get to everybody regardless of their settings. So that way, you know, they can say, "Hey, we've got a missing person. Can you, you know, have you seen him? Contact police department," something like that, so. And then we've got to get the library, police and fire, and that's pretty much it.
So for the folks that are watching this evening, I mean, what's their first step right now if they want to pick up this app?
So right now, it's, the app is basically waiting for approval before
Before we put it out?
Before the department heads can start posting. So the app is available on the App Store now to be downloaded. But there is no information that's being posted until the app can, you know, gets approved, so. People can look at it, see what it has to offer, but not actually receive any information just yet. And that's an unfortunate part of building an app is there's a three to four-week process of getting the app approved by Apple and also getting it approved by Android. It's kind of two systems in one. So it's hard to judge when to submit it to them to have it ready for when you want to release the apps, so.
And what's your thought there? I mean, you're waiting for this board to make that decision before you send it out?
I think one of the big things that we need to work on is, Gary, you know, we've had a meeting with the department heads to show them this, to show them how to post, to show them how to use it. We've started working with who's going to be responsible for what. The big thing is, is making sure that the department heads know what is and isn't acceptable to be posted. Make sure there's a code of conduct within the department heads on what they should or shouldn't do. And identify kind of the backend workings of the app. So, the app is ready to launch, it's ready to go. We just need to make sure we're internally ready to start posting to the app.
And what's the step there? I mean, what, I mean, it just sounds like you've already met with them, so what's... Are they allowed now to post at this point?
I think, I think the first step would be to put together some sort of code of conduct or a social media policy in place so that we can protect ourselves with what our department heads post in there. I mean, if Gary feels comfortable saying, "Well, I've talked to these department heads. Let's go ahead and allow them to post before we have that code of conduct fully created." You know, that's, that's something we'll have to discuss in place, but...
But it, it, there was some time ago, some time ago, that there was some discussion there with Keith and with Gary about, about a code of conduct.
Right, yep.
And that should be available pretty much at any time?
So I think we did, we did, Keith did do some work. I had a task and we were still working for us, reaching out to other towns. And I had gotten some social media policies, policies from other communities. And Keith had worked together with the department heads to put one together for the board to look at. But we, we never brought that to the board because we were not really using social media. And we never got to that point when we were ready to use a social media policy because we weren't using social media all that much anymore. I think with the app that we have now, it's going to allow us to have somewhat of a more streamlined use protocol. We can always have a social media policy. But we're not going to be using public social media like Facebook or Instagram or those other outlets that are not owned and operated by the Town of Madawaska. This app is going to be town property. It is for our own use. And it's not a place where communication can go back and forth and people, you know, like for instance, Facebook, I mean, a lot of the issue with Facebook and other social media applications is that oftentimes the departments were using their own Facebook accounts to promote town rec department or police department activities as a sub-account, if you will, or just sharing. And that, that puts, that sort of puts it out... puts it out there that those applications are being used for private and public uses, and that's where the social media policy really comes into play. Uh it sort of tries to delineate for the for the employees, if they're going to use social media, what they can and cannot say on social media in regards to uh speaking on behalf of the town. So in this, in this instance, where we have our own uh our own app, uh we're basically putting out information uh about things that are going on, roads that might be washed out, activities of the rec department, uh posting board meeting agendas, you know, whatever, you know, just just town business. And so I think that not to hold up the 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 launch of the app, I think that this board could uh in the interim of a uh of a wider use policy for the uh for the app, the board could set uh as part of their their uh a motion, if you will, just a statement that says that this app will shall be only used for town, then it's the only thing that will be posted on this app by the departments will be items related to their departments, uh and nothing else. No political commentary, there's, you know, no opinions about anything, that it's just, this is what's going on, this is going to happen. We have a road project coming in, we might wanna detour, things of that nature, just town business. So I think I, you know, just my thought is, uh you could almost have a promotion right now that speaks to that, that the department heads that are gonna be authorized to use the app, their departments uh are are could be uh could know from the board action tonight that says, this is what you're gonna use the app for, and nothing else. You could board that however you want. And that would give uh enough guidance for us to get started. And then we can kind of tweak together uh a a use policy uh that we can put before the board at a later time.
Yeah, Dan?
The fact that the average age of our population in Madawaska is certainly not decreasing. I would feel fairly safe to say that the average age in Madawaska is at an age that they are not very proficient with phones and social media, these games and these apps. And seeing that this entire app thing was sold to us as a board on a half-truth, that Mr. Boucher was gonna be the middleman with another company, does not sound well with me. And I would like the record to show that I am not in favor of this entire venture. Seeing that it was sold to us on a half-truth and that I feel that it's money that is not well spent for the town of Madawaska for the very little that it's gonna bring back.
So noted.
So.
But do we keep going or?
No, I'd like to address that, what half-truth was sold, so the public knows that there was no half-truth. What half-truth was it sold on?
I just stated that you sold this entire app thing to the Board of Selectmen in executive session.
Yes.
That you were gonna be the middleman to another company that was gonna develop this app for us, but with your little spiel here tonight, it is purely obvious that you are the sole man in the development of this app, and you sold this to us on a half-truth.
So the truth is, Dan, that there is a developer who did build this application. I was the liaison between the two. I did not build this app myself, there's no way I could've done this on my own. There was actually three development companies who were part of developing this application. One company built the recreation department module, one pro- company built the notification system module, and a third subcontractor built the app as a whole and was responsible for that.
Okay, let me, let me, let me jump in. Again, when we discuss issues like this, I need facts. If you're gonna tell me something that's factual, Dan, that I need something to follow up on?
I told you, the facts, you were in the executive session, you heard what he told us.
Dan, you know, right now, the action is that you are questioning the way that this app was was created.
Yes, I am.
And I'm saying to you, if you have something in, as a fact, that you wanna share with me directly so that I can consider this in a meeting?
You don't wanna talk to me, you started right this, at the start of this meeting.
Because it's not, it's not part of our meeting. If you wanted to bring it up to me, then you should.
All of the meetings that we've had in the last eight months, that you you allowed under other business?
Dan, Dan, don't speak over me. Right now, the discussion is the app itself.
You had, you had given me the floor, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm taking the floor back.
No, no.
Yes, I am taking the floor back.
You have not that authority, you have not that authority.
I am the chair.
No, sir.
I am the chair, and I am saying to you,
Under Robert's rule of order, I must relinquish the floor back to you. You do not have the authority to take it back.
And if I have to warn you again, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Very good, Mr. Chairman.
All right, continue.
No, that's all I have. So the 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 big final thing with the app is it's a living, breathing animal. If tomorrow the board decides, and and this is one of the things that I'm actually entertaining now, is, hey, let's have people come into the app and renew their gym passes and have that information automatically sent to the door system so that they don't even have to even come into the rec department to renew their pass. That saves a lot of time and energy, and anybody can do it at any time. That's a possibility. So any future thing that we see, we want this app to do, we can build it into it. It's it's just a building block of what is potentially, you know, potentially possible.
Again, I mean, you you look at, you look at this from a from a a business owner's standpoint, and and you know, you wanna put out something uh on the app here as far as a a restaurant, if it's a meal, if it's, you know, people coming in from outside, what a perfect, what a perfect format for them to say, okay, hey, look, Big Rick, I've got his, I've got his his address, I've got a map, I know how to get there with my snow machine. This is, this is the price, I mean, I I I uh I I I'm seeing this as a as a great positive for our town. Anybody else? All right, then I would entertain a motion that we accept this app for the town, the town's business only by all of our department heads. You'll make that motion, do I have a second? Are we all in favor? Opposed? We have four, four and one opposed.
Can I ask, could I ask the board in relation to this um this app authorization or the promotion to proceed? To re- basically make a motion that states that the app shall be used solely for the town business and no other purposes?
That'd be so.
So that way, you know, that way it it tells?
I I believe that it was stated that way, Gary.
Yeah.
What, has it? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay, thank you.
I, to piggyback off that, though, I just wanna make sure that we have some clear guidelines with the businesses and and um that you have those rules in front of you, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, Laurie, you know, we'll we'll get to work on that, for sure. And we'll have something, I think, for the next board meeting that you guys can uh, that you guys can adopt. I think maybe I can work with the department heads uh via Zoom, uh we can come up with some some common sense, simple-to-read guidance, protocols that for us, for you guys to consider at the next board meeting.
I I'm not as concerned, Gary, with the protocols for the department heads as I am for the businesses. Because the minute that you don't have them and any, just one person puts something in there that they shouldn't, it could cause a lot of grief for you guys. So I think the best thing is to say, you know, for the businesses too, like, if you're registering, that's fine, but like, here's a disclaimer when you register that says, you know, this is what it's for and this, like, you know? That way, if you do end up, God forbid, next year kicking someone off it because they violated the rules, you know, they could easily say, well, you don't have any rules, you know, so.
Yeah, we can actually incorporate that into the, when they sign up. Instead of just saying you're responsible for what you post, we can put a pop-up that gives more details of.
Yeah, just the.
Yeah, yeah.
The one thing that we we might wanna do to it, Laurie, it's inevitable that we're going to find things that weren't, language that we're gonna have to tweak and as we, we're gonna be learning, as we go along with this new uh with this new app. Things are gonna pop up and we're gonna have to adjust or modify or, you know, address. Uh so I think it's going to be a somewhat of a fluid uh process for a while. I do think, though, that we want wanna put something, Jason, uh into the app that the app, businesses that can register into the app or have to be in Madawaska, right?
Right, yeah.
So if if somebody from San Francisco registers their business into our app, we're gonna have to weed those out. So I don't know if there's a, is, you know, if there's a way to weed those out, it's probably hard to prevent people from registering their business, uh but, you know, a good thing to think about.
Yeah, it's ve- very easy in the backend, um on the main approval screen, that you could, you could see where the business's is address is without ever opening up the details. So it's very quick to sort those out by just, you know, deli- declining that app with a single click. I mean, you can just decline ten apps in in a matter of two seconds. And then one of the big things too that we looked at is the biggest thing now is cybersecurity, protecting your apps and protecting your information, and all of this information is stored in the Google Cloud on secure servers. And there is a kill switch built into the app. So if we do happen to have a hacker or somebody who makes their way into the app and takes it over, uh we've got a kill switch that'll de- deactivate the app on on all devices until we can get that sorted out and then reactivate it, so.
And it's available, to Doug's question earlier, it's on the App Store now?
Yes, it's on the App Store now. So if you search for town of Madawaska or Madawaska on the Google Play Store or on the Apple Store, you can download the app to your phone, yeah? Um it is beneficial to log in with a Google or Apple account rather than skipping because you have more features. You can't interact with the app, but you can't send in a police tip if you haven't registered. And that's just a security issue to stop spam bots.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Yeah, and things like that. So you do have to be registered in the app to to activate these features, to to kinda bypass these spam bots and things like that.
I I just wanna say that uh, I'm glad that we're able to get to this point. This is something that we've been talking about for a long time. That we've been uh, you know, a little bit silent on social media because of the volatility of it at times and and the content is not being something that belongs to uh the town, it belongs to social media. And whatever which one you're using, which application. So really excited that we've been able to get to launch this. We're being very innovative as a town. I don't think I've I've seen another town uh do something like this. So I think we are uh, we are creating a new road here, if you will. Uh we're being innovative. Uh we're doing a great service for our residents to get information to them, uh with notifications. There might not be a lot of, all the people, but a lot of people do use uh phones and they rely on notifications and and things like that. And so this gets us moving in a in a great direction. It's gonna be a useful tool, and I think Jason will be, what we did talk about, uh I don't, or maybe you did and I missed it, was that we can, we can go back and see what kinda traffic we're we're generating on the backend, on our end to see what's working and what's not working. You know, there might be things that are generating a lot of interest just by the people that have downloaded or are looking at a particular part of the app, one of the departments. So we can actually go back in and look at traffic and engage uh the activity there and and make adjustments to what we're lacking, if there's something that's not right. Uh we can make subtle changes to how we do things, uh to improve uh the delivery of information.
Yeah, so the app is fully uh traceable. So we can sit there and get a report on how many people downloaded the app compared to how many people deleted it off their phones. We can see how many people have opened the app today, uh how many people looked at town news versus police. Uh we can, you know, there's a lot of details in the backend that we can see on a day-by-day basis of who's using what. Um it's anonymous, so we don't see, you know, Joe Blow signed into this place, but we do see a a count of users.
And what will that do for the town?
I think it provides a place for businesses to easily advertise and it also provides a a a way for people, let's say, there's a lot of people in New Hampshire who come up here to snowmobile every year. So they might install the app, and then all of a sudden they're getting notifications from the vis- from the specials section saying, hey, Big Rick's has specials on meals, Martin's Motel is doing fifty percent off sale, uh snowmobile gas is is twenty percent off at this place. Oh, tonight's, it's a good time to go up for a week-long trip. Or, hey, I'm going up uh for a week to visit family, what's going on? They can click on the tourism section and see that the Boy Scouts are having a special event some weekend, or that, you know, certain uh Four Seasons Lodge is having a Christmas special. Or they can see what's going on around town and better judge whether or not they should come up, or, hey, cool, there's a lot of things going on this weekend, let's make an extra trip. So it's, again, this is just the building foundation of the app. This is what allows us to get our foot in the door, to open up to having even more, bigger and better things added to the app so that we can try to attract more people from outside.
I just wanna point out that first off, you know, Dan, you were for this at first until somehow somebody I have the floor, you like to use that, I have it, right?
Right.
You 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 were for it until someone put in your head somewhere that something was not right. So, you know, I I appreciate the work Jason did. But I think what some people are not even aware of either, it's not him that came and sold this to Gary. This was part of, and I know some people are, you know, think that was a horrible thing or whatever, but back when they did the grand plan and they did all of these um surveys, this was something that came out of that. And Gary hung on to that for a long time, and we have been after him for communicate, communicate, communicate. We wanna get the young people involved in the town, we want the young people to know what's going on, we wanna pull them in a little bit. And so he brought this to Jason when Jason got on the board, thinking, okay, Jason's got connections, let's. So I I just wanna say that because, you know, someone said to me this week, oh, you know, Jason came in and he gave you all this I stuff and he told you to do this and everyone's following it. No, he actually was asked, and this is in the plan from, you know, whether people agree with the plan or not. It's not something that he came and and tried to to sell to us.
This community needs is jobs. Jobs is what we need. And we're not working do- we're working towards a little app that nobody's gonna use.
We're working for fifty-some odd jobs right now, Dan. I mean, it doesn't mean we sit on our ass and do nothing else at the same time.
All right. I think we're, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
You second, who in favor?